The October 22, 2024 Lower Frederick Township Board of Supervisors Work Session is hereby called to order. Everybody listed on the roll call is here. Under Solicitor, we have Colby Grimm. He is not here today. We have Peter Nelson, our regular Solicitor, was able to make it. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Announcements, township meetings are recorded for the purpose of preparing the minutes, and the recording is destroyed after the minutes are approved. The meeting will be posted online on the Township YouTube channel. The link can be found on the Board of Supervisors page on the Township website. It's requested that all persons wishing to speak before the Board shall state their name, address, and the subject matter upon which they wish to speak for the record. In the interest of facilitating the business of the Board, all persons addressing the Board shall be limited to three minutes unless such time is extended by the Chair for good cause. And let's please try to keep it to three minutes. Sometimes people talk for eight minutes, or 10 minutes, or 15 minutes. So we're going to try and keep it close to that. Individuals are requested to remain in their seats and respect when other persons are speaking. The Board of Supervisors will provide a reasonable opportunity for citizens to comment on any non-agenda items after all agenda items have been addressed but prior to the adjournment of the public meeting. First item on the agenda is zoning hearing board application for 44 Sep Road.
Okay, this is a request for variance from Lower Frederick zoning ordinance 170-24 and 170-44 to allow an accessory pole building in the front yard and with the required and within the required yard setback in the Township's R1 Rural Residential District at 44 Sep Road.
Are the applicants here tonight? No, okay. Any questions or comments from the Board? And again, we have the option to support, to oppose, or to remain neutral. I think there's one other thing which slips my mind.
Jason, I don't know how much you know about the application, but is this pole barn, right? That's what it is, is a pole barn?
Yes.
Are we talking one or two stories?
I don't know if it's two stories. I know it's, I know height is not an issue. And as you can see, I put the, I put the parcel up on the screen. This is one of those situations where it's a rectangle and they're, they don't have much on the sides. Because I did talk, you know, I did ask where they're looking to put it would be in this area, I believe.
Yeah, that's what the plan shows, right?
Yes.
So do you know how many feet they have between the side, the side yard setback? The drawing we had, the resolution isn't sufficient. It looks like maybe 22 feet?
I didn't, I didn't end up measuring.
That's all right. I'm going to guess that's approximately what it is based on the drawing, but.
Can you read the number?
Oh geez.
It's all right.
It says on the application 40-foot side setback.
That's the requirement, I think.
That's the requirement.
I think they've, it looks like 22 from.
Get my magnifying glass out.
Hold on. 22.4.
Yeah, okay. And they also want to put it in the front yard as opposed to in the rear, right?
Yes.
Personally, I think either I would prefer to stay neutral, or I'm not, personally not in favor of it. I think it's an awfully large structure for that lot being so narrow, 30-foot by 40-foot. And I would be concerned that the neighboring property is going to have a building which might be two stories tall, only 20-foot off the line. Granted, the neighboring property is, they have a very small home that's right up near the road, but somebody could decide to build a different home on that property. So in this matter, I think it should be left up to the neighboring property owner if they have an objection, but I'm, I'm not inclined to support it, but I will be happy to remain neutral as well. And I have no opinion and remain neutral and let the process go forward.
Terry?
I'll remain neutral with it.
Okay, it sounds like we have consensus. We'll remain neutral and offer no opinion, let the zoning hearing board do their job.
Yeah, I have no opinion.
All right.
All right, so the, the next application, and I apologize, the, these are both scheduled for this upcoming Monday, October 28, 2024. So the next application, they are requesting a variance from the Township zoning ordinance section 170-44 point A4 to allow 150-foot minimum lot width and ordinance 170-44 point A6 to allow a side yard setback of 30 feet for residential addition in the Township's R1 Rural Residential District at Three Girl Off Road. So they're looking to put this addition on this side, on the, I guess it'd be the north side, based on the plan.
And is this the same 40-foot side setback? They're looking for, so they're, they're proposing 30-foot?
Yes. Yep.
I don't have any issue with it. If the Board wants to support it, I would be in favor of that. Otherwise, I'm happy to remain neutral as well.
I'll remain neutral.
You have a fine with neutral?
I'm also happy to support it. They're only asking for 10 feet. Terry?
I'm also supporting.
All right, so we have three people who support, so the Board supports the application.
So in this case, do you want some sort of communication to the zoning hearing board?
Does it have to come from you, or can Jason just convey that?
Jason could convey that, yes.
That's what we should do.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is the Monco 2040 grant project, project estimate discussion. You going to take that, Carol, or is that going to be Jason?
I'll be happy to start in.
Okay.
So as requested by the Board, we have prepared a very preliminary, very preliminary estimate of probable costs for installation of sidewalks along both frontages of Delphi Junction, a commercial property located on the eastern corner of Gravel Pike and Spring Mount Road. The goal of the project is to install a four-foot concrete sidewalk along Spring Mount Road and a six-foot concrete sidewalk along Gravel Pike. Now, this estimate is very preliminary. There's been no soil testing, survey, or design work towards such a project. It also has not been determined if the property owner will bear any of the costs, such as replacement of the commercial sign in front of the office space at the southern end of the property. Again, this is very preliminary, this very preliminary estimate informs us that the construction costs for such a project at 2024 costs would be in the range of $350,000 to $375,000. These costs are somewhat evenly split over the two frontages. Design permitting, project management, and contingencies all bring the preliminary estimate of project costs to around $427,000. If the Township wished to proceed with the project, next steps would be to include, would include communication with Montgomery County about the feasibility of the project being awarded funding under the Monco 2040 grant program.
So what would be the township match if indeed the $427,000 estimate is accurate? And given that the, the Monco grant is now, can go up to $250,000, but we still have to match a lot of what was left?
You've got it exactly. The difference would be $177,000.
$177,000, okay.
This works out to be roughly 70% of the total cost would be paid by the Township.
No, I think it would be less than that.
No, if it's four.
If they pay 250 and we pay 177.
Oh, sorry. Did it wrong.
It's a big number either way.
Yeah, either way, it's a big number. Sorry about that.
I think it's more like maybe 40%. Anyway, it doesn't matter. Thank you, Carol, for, for doing your detailed work. Just speaking for myself, I don't know where we're going to get $177,000 for a sidewalk that eventually will be a great asset to the community, but for a while, it'll be a very expensive sidewalk. Those are my concerns.
So we have the option of looking at the whole thing or doing part of it, right? Or, or do we feel that if we just did the Route 29 piece that that may not be funded by, would, would really hurt our chances of having it funded by the county? Is that? Am I off-base in that analysis, or am I?
I, I'm not sure. I broke it out because, because of the way the estimate went to give, you know, if the Board wanted to move forward with a portion, I, I've, I'm not sure how they would view that. I don't know, I'm not sure how they would view it.
Can you show the one page that, I think it's probably the proceeding page, which gives the breakdown there? Yeah, okay. So I mean, just, it looks like just the cost for the sidewalk is $93,000, right? That's just, is that, Carol, is that just materials and installation costs on that? I'm talking about the bottom grouping there.
Understood. So the, the bid unit price for sidewalk was actually acquired from other bid unit prices recently presented to the Township. That's actually the bid unit price for the sidewalk on the Spring Mount Road job.
So if we just went for the piece along Route 29, then the 20% number gets us, what, 40,000? Would that be our out?
45.6, yep.
Yeah, there it is, yeah.
So don't remember when this came up as a topic, but can you remind me why it has to be the, the concrete sidewalks and six feet versus a trail, blacktop, or another modified material? Anybody?
This was the direction, I understand, the Board wanted me to go in terms of estimating The six-foot wide on the frontage on the Gravel Pike frontage was based on some minimum trail standards that were presented to me by a planning commission member, but I left it at four-foot wide to match the existing sidewalk on Gravel Pike because you have a four-foot wide, a 4.5-foot wide sidewalk over the bridge there. As to concrete versus asphalt, I, I mean, I don't have a strong opinion on that. We could look either direction. You know, if, if the Board wanted us to look at asphalt costs instead, at least for the one on 29, we could certainly do that.
Yeah, I mean, from the, the whole process, the 250 from, for the grant and the 20% match, I even thought that was going to be a difficult conversation to talk about $50,000 for a sidewalk, obviously, over $170,000 is, is a no-go. I think it's good to show intention that we're attempting to make connections, but definitely not at, at the cost that we're seeing. I mean, would it drastically reduce any of these numbers if we were to go with some sort of blacktop? Or does that take away the use of this project?
We could absolutely look at that, and that would reduce the unit price for the walkway. I guess there's question of aesthetics and also talking to the property owner about how they would feel about blacktop in front of their property instead of the more common sidewalks that we have elsewhere along property frontage.
Noel, Terry, do you have any comments on this?
I tend to agree with Supervisor Byrd. The whole nut is probably, the whole project all in itself is, is definitely a no-go. And when I, when you dovetail this on top of our upcoming budget discussion, and of course, the grant itself is a reimbursement grant, we would have to have that money upfront and have all that money upfront. So, timing-wise, I'm not going to say that it's not something we should consider, but maybe just not at this moment, but I would definitely like to see what the cost would be and how the property owner would feel about doing the asphalt as opposed to the concrete.
I'd feel the same way. I mean, he may not want blacktop in front of his business.
Yeah, and, and the county could always also come back and say.
Ask for concrete.
We want concrete, so we don't know. So what do you want to do? Do you want to put this away for maybe a future discussion?
When's the deadline for the grant?
I think it's March 1st.
Yeah, it's like, it's somewhere in the first week of March, I believe.
Well, even if we table this for a conversation later in the year, we would still have to consider it within the budget itself. So I don't know if this is something that we want to just maybe table it until next year and maybe see if there's a grant for 2026.
Hang on till we're done, Warren. Any other comments?
I'm going to guess, you know, even if we went with blacktopping and it was acceptable, I mean, even if you just took the unit price and halved it, you know, it's still going to be a chunk of change. And I don't know whether that's a reasonable assumption to half it, but I just decided to half it.
Just make sure that microphone's on to green.
I have a comment and a question. First off, I think this is an important connection, and I'd like to see it happen, but I'd also like to see it happen in conjunction with a commitment from the county to do their connection to Swansville. And I, I think it'd be really great if we could work with them and, you know, so that people don't say, well, where are we going to spend thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars for a sidewalk that doesn't connect to anything? Second off, I was looking at the cost of the design, and I noticed we're, Carol gets paid by a percentage, 7%. Is that what I'm reading correctly on that?
That's not how I get paid, Warren, but those are kind of standard numbers in grant programs to allocate to design. If this were to go to design, it wouldn't just be me, there would be a structural engineer involved because there would be a wall included. So there would, it's not by percentage, it's actually by hours spent designing, but that's sort of a generalized percentage to use with grant programs.
Okay, well, thanks for clearing that up, because if, if we were costing it a percentage, I thought that that would disincentivize keeping the costs down. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dan.
Dan Orf, Krats Road. I feel this is kind of like a chicken and egg situation, and I think it'd be good if we could do the smaller part. Yeah, I know it's money, yeah, not unfamiliar with that concept, but if we don't do something to get this thing rolling, I, I don't think the, the second half, I worry that the Swansville to Delphi thing won't occur because we don't have, we haven't tried to put any marks in the ground. So if there's any further way to further minimize that just short part on 29, that would be, you know, if you've got any creativity that you can come up with, Carol, to minimize it a little bit to get us a lower price on that, I think in, I don't know if it hit the two-minute, three-minute warning, but it seems that we, you got to get something going in order for the other, what do you call, stones to hurt, start to fall into place, so, thank you.
Thank you. Warren, you made a really good point. It would be good to know if the county's committed to this and what their timeline looks like. Is it five years? Is it 10 years? Is it 20 years? I mean, for us to do a sidewalk now that we can't really afford now and wait 20 years for the rest of the connection, I don't see the point in that, but if, if we can find out from the county anymore, that would be helpful.
The, the last discussions we had on it, they were at minimum 10 years out.
Okay.
And that was, was from county officials. That was the end of last year now. I don't know that anything's changed since, but, you know, if you want me to reach out, I can. But that was what we were told last year.
I, I think it would be also helpful to understand what they would be willing to accept in a grant proposal. Like, this is for a six-foot wide, could it, could we do something more like a trail or a walking path? Again, that might not save a lot of money, but it would be just helpful to know if they'd be willing to accept something, you know, of a smaller scope than this.
Yeah, I, I agree, and actually, I think some of the information you're presenting now, at least the, the images, could help that conversation and show them that we're ready to move forward with some questions, and it's pushing up Spring Mount Road, and we are ready to do another project on Spring Mount Road, so we are committed to connectivity, but it doesn't make sense for the sidewalk to nowhere until there's somewhere to go. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ernie.
Since I'm one of the three men committed with this, Paul Spence is not here, and Greg Posh is not here either, and we talked about this, and we were, with the meeting with Carol, it's interesting that I can echo the statements of the people that talked before me and the Board. I'm concerned about the fact that we have not heard that much from the county yet as to their progression with that trail, and for us to spend money at this juncture and put a sidewalk in of concrete and, you know, the work, and again, we haven't gotten the bid yet, and we're a long way from that, but we have a projected budget that Carol, you know, prepared. But I, I think we have to find out more about the county and their obligation to get started with this trail. And, and some of the conversations I've had with our group, it seems like some of that trail work would come back to Lower Frederick also. So we have to still wait with the county to determine the ownership of that trail and what the meets and bounds are and what they want to do. So in any case, I think, I think we should put it in Lippo for a little while and see what's going on with the county. That's only my statements on one of the three. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think this is one of the rare occasions where everyone in the room is kind of in agreement, so I think that's a good thing. So what I'm hearing is that we all think this is a great idea, but we want to know more from the county, and we're concerned about the cost. So for now, we're going to table it? Is that, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm all right doing that, bearing in mind that, you know, we are also looking to make improvements to Cobal Park, we have a group working on that, so that's also money too.
Yes, this is true. All right. That brings us to a resolution for a PICO grant for Cuddy Park stormwater revision.
Okay, so this is a, essentially a do-over. What I had the Board sign, the wording was not correct, so I wanted, I wanted to update this cost to what the Board was willing to commit to this grant, and that would be in the amount of the $2,651, which would be half of, half of the project. So last, at last month's meeting, the way it read was that the Board would be committing up to 5,000, which was not the discussion, so I wanted to do an updated resolution. And then we, we'd still have time to submit the grant this week.
So the amount we would commit is actually less than the original amount?
Yeah, I had talked to you guys about doing, like, it being around 2,500, so we needed the, I needed the, the numbers to match with what the Board was willing to commit, and I didn't want to commit us to 5,000 when that wasn't the discussion and what, with the Board approved the, the project as.
Okay, so the motion would, would read, I move to rescind Resolution 2024 R-11. Sorry, what happens to that then? Does it just come off of the list? There's no more 11?
No, it stays.
It's, it's just rescinded?
Yes.
Got it, okay. And adopt Resolution 2024 R-13 authorizing application to the 2024 PICO Green Region Open Space Program for the Cuddy Park Dog Park Stormwater Project and committing $2,651 as a match for the project. Any discussion from the Board? Again, we've discussed this before, just the amount is different.
So the amount is some funny number that we got some, somehow, 2, 6, 5, 1?
Working with Carol a bit on this, from her original estimate. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't pop up with this number.
So when is, if we were fortunate enough to win, when did they make the award? I think in the spring?
I believe so. I know we've got till Thursday to, to apply, and then it's awarded in 20, it'll, it's awarded the next year.
So, okay, so for $2,600, we're going to, you know, essentially delay this project for another year, kind of, right? I, I guess that's the point, you know, if we, if we don't do it now, I mean, there's good times to grow grass and bad times to grow grass, and I'm kind of guessing that if we don't get the money till the spring, or, I mean, do we, do we have to wait until we find out we get the grant to actually do this project, or can we just recover our costs?
I, I, I don't have that answer.
Well, it looks like the total project cost is $4,200.
It, it was 42, it's, now it's.
So what is it now?
53.02.
Now it's 53?
02, yeah.
53.02, so it's a 50% match?
Yes.
So it'd be $2,600.
Yeah, that's, that's where this number.
Right.
I mean, what I know is this has been an ongoing issue for, for a few years now, so I guess as far as the timing, I had not initially planned for our Public Works to do it this year, and I've ran it, because, you know, the weather is probably cooperating, so if I would, if the Board wants us to do it this year, I guess that, that would be, you know, certainly an option. But I, I didn't have this on a timetable to get done this year.
Okay, but, and I'm a little premature because I know we're talking about budgets, but then I assume that. But, and I'm a little premature because I know we're talking about budgets, but then I assume that we will budget it to be done next year regardless of whether we get this grant?
Correct, which now like, it's not currently, it doesn't exist in the current draft budget.
Okay.
Do we know around what month this is usually awarded? I mean, are we talking March, April, May, June, July?
Based on last year, it looked like the March-April timeframe. Unfortunately, they don't write that. I looked for it. They don't spell...
They don't spell that out in any of their publications. I just had to look and see when things happened last year. And it seemed like, you know, March-April timeframe.
I'm finding the same thing. April, the 2023 grants were announced in April, late April.
Again, this has been a problem for years, so I'm okay waiting another six months if we can not have to pay for the whole thing. So, so what we're, I guess what we're really looking for is we need to rescind the other resolution, which had the wrong amount, and adopt a new resolution. Is there any more discussion on this?
One other item. The grant description does talk about retroactive reimbursement for costs accrued after the application deadline, but before the distribution of grant funds may be allowed on a case-by-case basis. So there may be a chance for us to do the work and then get reimbursed. But, you know, that's something we probably can talk to the grant people about and to see, you know, whether or not it's allowed.
Do we know how easy or hard it is to get the grant?
I was under the impression this was fairly easy. I've, I've not, I've never submitted a PICO grant. So it's basically kind of based on, you know, word of mouth. The project fits in their parameters as, as an improvement to our park area. So...
So would it be worth, when you submit the grant, sometime right after that, calling out, giving them a phone call and ask some of those questions?
If that's a board, if the board wishes me to, sure.
Would the board like Jason to do that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think you'd want to do this project, you know, in a time of year where you can let the grass establish itself. And, you know, if that is, I don't, you know, I'm sure there are people that know a lot more about growing grass than I do, but it's, you know, maybe the best time is to try to do this in the spring. But that depends on the availability of public works and, you know, I'm gonna leave, leave that up to you.
Okay, but would, would someone like to make this motion?
I'll say a move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Chuck, you guys have a second?
All right, so Supervisor Halter made the motion, Supervisor Yager made the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, so we'll get more information on that, and we can decide later whether it makes sense and whether we have the labor to do this earlier. Okay. And that brings us to the fiscal year 2025 budget presentation.
So at this time, it's up to the board if you would like Carol and Peter to stay or go. Just throwing that out there.
How long do you think this will be?
I think I can get through the presentation pretty fast. I don't know the conversation, but I know at least we're not starting at nine o'clock this year.
All right.
True.
So hopefully we'll...
Maybe we could ask, do Peter and Carol anticipate anything in the budget presentation that would require them to stay for another... No, not three hours. Who said that? Who said that?
Me. No.
Okay. Okay, all right, Carol?
I'm not sure of the whole details of the budget presentation, but I suspect that any questions can be dealt with later.
Okay, super. All right. We'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Three hours. You can stay three hours.
And away we go. So this is the 2025 fiscal year budget presentation. I thought we could start with the sewer fund first, since that should be the, what I would hope is the easier conversation. As far as the sewer fund operating revenue, between the 2024 forecast through the end of this year and the proposed budget, as you can see, the percentages of the budget as far as the tap-in fees, as you may recall, that, that big $656,000, that was Farm View giving us their tap-in fees upfront. I'm not aware that that will happen with Melbourne Hill. And then the adjusting for sewer use charge. So as per usual, the sewer use charge is the big, is, is the big percentage, is big, big percent of the operating revenue for the sewer fund. And then I've still got interest at a 4.5%, since from what I'm reading, it's not going, it's not going to drop dramatic, dramatically. As far as the fund revenue, $483,000 decrease in sewer connection tap-in fee revenue. This was a 73.7% decrease from the 2024 projection or forecast. As I stated, the township received a Farm View tap-in fees upfront in 2024, and we're expecting 17 new connections for Melbourne, for the Melbourne Hill subdivision in 2020, in, in 2025. $46,000 increase in sewer use charge revenue, that's a 5% increase from the 2024 projection. That's with the expected 39 total new connections for 2025. There is also a $40 per year increase proposed for 2025 as part of this proposed budget. As far as interest income, that'd be a $10,000 decrease from the 2024 projection. As far as an increase in reserve usage, this is just, would be to balance the budget in 2025. The 2025 proposed budget does have a deficit, and we are projecting this year to have a surplus primarily, mainly because of the tap-in fees received. This is what this year's budget and forecast looks like, along with the draft, and then along with a projection from 2026 to 2029. As you can see, as far as tap-in fees, this is accounting for the two active subdivisions. Essentially, the way I broke those down, since they're kind of somewhat simultaneously being built out at the same time, is 40% of the overall houses to be built, projecting to be built in 2025, 45% in 2026, and the remainder in 2027. So that's why you see that kind of progression to where then we're back into averaging one, one connection a year. In turn, the sewer use charge goes up as we're getting more users. And then the sewer certification application fee, that's just part of the connection part. And then interests gradually going down. As far as the sewer fund expenses, 10.9% increase in overall labor, using 5% inflation rate for the O and M, the operation and maintenance. Continued proposed operation maintenance includes the sewer line televised cleaning repair line item, which is $31,500. And then $120,701 set aside and the CIP purchasing and the percent of the tap-in fee. As the board may recall, I was directed to look at potentially what, as far as splitting up the tap-in fee. I believe I sent, probably sent that to the board probably two, two months or so ago. What I'm proposing is taking the 30.5% part of what created the tap-in fee, having, for, having that go to the sewer capital, and then the remaining 69.5% of that stay in the sewer fund to help fund the, the, the maintenance and, of, and use of the, of the fund. So that was just straight based on the tap, the tap-in fee. I don't know if the board had any other thoughts on that, what it might consider doing with the tap-in fee, or I just thought that would keep it simple.
I mean, just in terms of the budget trends you're seeing, is 30% seem like the right amount?
So I will say, in operating and doing the self, like updating the self-liquidating report, it certainly allowed, it allowed us to lower that, that, last year we, or for this year, we, we, we budgeted $100,000 to go to sewer capital. I've bumped that number all the way down to $18,000 because it is getting that influx of, of revenue that we had not talked about last year when we, when we created the capital improvement plan. So it, it, it certainly allows the sewer capital fund to increase over time, but also it, it doesn't make, it, it doesn't, it still creates some relief for the sewer fund to be able to maintain the services and the, the maintenance of the sewer system.
So if a, shouldn't say if, when a pump wears out or a motor wears out and has to be rebuilt, which fund is that coming out of?
That, that would come out of the sewer capital.
But that's a maintenance thing.
Well, it could, okay, start that. It could potentially come out of the sewer capital if the board so chose, chose it. As you may recall, the sewer...
Well, if that's the case, I think you should put more, more of the percentage in the sewer capital. Because it's, it's a maintenance, you, you have to anticipate that pumps and motors and things are going to wear out. That's maintenance. And if you're, if you're only putting 30% in sewer capital and then you're using that money for maintenance, to me, it's not consistent with what, the way it should work. At least that's my opinion.
Yeah, and just, I mean, my, my take on where the money should come from is if it's something small, like, you know, 500, a couple thousand dollars, that would come out of the budget. But for something like, you know, like, we spend a lot of money to buy a new police car, what is that, 30, 40,000? And a pump could be the same amount. That would be, that should come out of the capital fund, the bigger ticket items. It only happens once in a while.
So what we have for, so as, as Chuck is aware, we do have a repair and maintenance line items in, in the sewer fund. And so that, once again, that, if we've got the money in there, it would come out of there first. And the CIP, the, the capital improvement would be able to back, would be able to back up the general or the sewer fund if, if it needed, if it needed the cash, I guess.
But, but if we had to replace a big expensive piece of equipment, I think that should be capital. I mean, I would, I would equate that to a vehicle or a generator or a bigger ticket item. I mean, some of these things are going to be really expensive. But anyway, I, I'm, I'm happy to have a higher percentage. Do you have one in mind? Chuck?
Sorry?
You have a higher percentage in mind? Higher than 30?
I mean, we're talking the tap-in fee, right? How to break in the tap, break up the tap-in fee. And I, I thought primarily that was to go toward the capital, building up that capital fund. You know, I, I think it, I mean, if we're, if you want to split it like that, then I think it maybe should be a, a number closer to 50%. I, I guess what I don't want to see happening is, and I know, you know, is that we're using this tap-in fee like it's been done in the past to, for an operating expense, right? Because that's not what it's for.
Correct.
And, you know, ever since I've been here, the supervisors have been playing that game. And when I leave here next year, hopefully, we're not playing that game.
How does the rest of the board feel with increasing it to something like 50%?
I tend to agree with that, yes.
Well, it should be that because, you know, if you're using it for repairs and all, it should be in the capital.
Yeah.
I don't know why you want to have so many different, you know, it's either, it's either repairs for money or it's, you know, putting sewers in. It just, you know, I don't know why you got to have so many different miscellaneous stuff like this. If you have repairs, you have repairs, no matter what it is. Why do you want to have so many different budgets? Is there a reason why?
So as far as repairs of pumps, controls, that's in the capital improvement plan based, based on a... Now, it's, it's a total amount and it's in the future, but if it, if it, if it broke tomorrow... So, so we do, we do try to anticipate when, you know, the kind of the, when something will wear out. And as, you know, pumps wear out, controls, so, so there, it is built into the capital improvement plan into the future.
So it just makes more sense to put more towards that.
Okay, so I think 50% is what I'm hearing, or...
Are you okay with that, Terry?
I am, but should that also just be another microscope conversation at some point for that? And we can make the decision now, too, to 50, but it seems like that is an item we've been talking about for a couple of years. I'd be happy to just check it off the list right now. But should we see that as a separate discussion at some point?
You mean to revisit it?
Just, just for the tap-ins, like what we're talking about tonight, some of the budgets items will play off of that, how the future money comes in. But I, I'm fine with it, making the decision now. I just want to make sure we don't decide it tonight and then realize we missed something, unless it's as simple as, is it 50/50 at that point, Jason? Is there another percentage that we have to?
No.
I, I think, I think, I think the bigger issue, Terry, is that after Melbourne and Prestige and maybe one day Gentera, there won't be really. I mean, after the next two or three or four years, we're not going to see tap in fees coming in. So we might as well load it up and upfront.
Yeah, I'm perfectly fine with that. I know we're also starting last year, looking at every year, just having a committed amount that we're, we are putting to that capital fund as well. So I just wanted to make sure we're not confusing two topics. I'm perfectly fine with the 50% tap in fee that closes that chapter that's been open for too long.
So I just took it out, I just took it out to 2030. And at that point, with the adjusted 18,000 set aside, annual set aside, the sewer funds, and this is the assumption with increasing the rates. The sewer fund cash balance at the end of 2030 would be 267,000.
As opposed to what? What was it before?
Approximately.
Yeah, approximately.
So you're talking, when you say that, you're saying that that's what the capital reserve number would be?
No, that's the sewer fund number. So what was presented to you guys tonight, that ending balance would have been 515, 533.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll see an update, but it doesn't, it's not going to make a huge difference in how the sewer budget goes for next year.
Certainly not at all. I mean, and once again, the sewer capital, it's a, it's a subset of the, of the sewer fund. So it's not some, you know, it's, it's one of those things we can revisit every year. You guys could, you know, essentially, if you wanted to make, you know, send some back out of the sewer capital if, if the fund needed it.
Yeah, again, I just, my, my one concern is, or I should say, a concern is, you know, we have a sewer plant and we've done other infrastructure roughly within the same time period, right? Within a 10-year period, just, just like in your house, you have a new house, all new appliances, and they all tend to break within a certain period of time. And I think you can count on that.
Yep.
Right? Because I, this is what I do for a living, pumps and compressors and motors and work with people who rebuild things. You can count on it.
Okay.
So 50%. Well, it's going to make this a little bit. It changes that, this 52,701 here to 86,395 for the proposed 2025 budget. So total expenses goes from 1.271 million to 1.28 million to accommodate the transfer.
But again, it's, it's, these are minor changes. Okay, and at the end of the day, money's fungible.
Correct.
Okay.
So can we go back two slides to the similar looking slide?
For the revenue, yep.
Yeah. So trying to just make this make more sense as far as, that's the one I want, yep. So if we take away all new, we have 978, take away some of the permits, we have our interest called a million dollars of revenue. So I think what we get confused with a lot is which tap and fees were getting early, which ones we're waiting for. And then if they never happened, then we just made a budget decision. So a million dollars in expenses, I'm sorry, revenue. And if you go to the expenses now and and take out the transfers, we're at like 1.1, 1.125. So are we projecting 125,000 dollar deficit in 25?
That's would be with the inflation, that'd be 115, a deficit of 115 with the, with the 50%.
Is that part of the self liquidating?
I, I did the self liquidating with the 30 and a half, so I would have to adjust that.
But it, but it's showing, it's showing 100 some thousand dollar deficit?
Hmm. Now, as far as the net income, the combined net income was, as far as the proposed, was negative 11,474. Obviously, that's not changing because all we're doing is.
Because of the tap.
Reallocation. If you combine that, yeah, if you can combine the sewer fund and the, and the sewer CIP, you're still getting a, the negative, negative 11,474 as far as the combined net income. So what it'll up, it'll, it'll raise the surplus in the, in the CIP. But obviously, as it's creating more of a deficit on the other side.
Right, it's a one time.
Yep.
So is this budget based on a sewer rate increase of $10 a quarter or?
Yes.
Not, so it is, so even with that, you're projecting a deficit.
Correct.
So the 25, the slide before this was with a 10, 10.
Yes.
$10, 40 a year increase?
Yes. Which that, that was, that was part of the self liquidating report. So as far as that goes, and what was interesting with doing the self liquidating report, I did that through 2044, we actually ended up at the same rate that was projected in 2021 of, of 1,200 a year. We just, we go, my, what I'm proposing goes up a little more incrementally, which whereas the 2021 report, but we did actually end up with the same sewer rate, which I thought was interesting, going at it a different way.
So when are we going to break even and go back into the black? Because we can't sustain a deficit every year.
Well, it, the only is either not to commit to the sewer capital or raise the rates higher. I mean, I, there's, unfortunately, with the sewer fund, you don't have, you don't have too many revenue buckets to choose from except for the, except for the sewer use charge. And like, you know, and as, you know, I don't think we're anticipating any large other, you know, really large development that would, that would add a bunch of users.
What, what rate increase would we break even? I mean, $12 a quarter, $15 a quarter? Do you have a break even point?
You mean to, to raise it now to break even?
I don't mean now, today, I mean in 2025. What would be the break even point to not be in the red?
So if it was raised at 235 per quarter, it would create with, with using the 5% inflation, it would create a surplus of $545.
How many customers do we have?
Starting out the year with a, projecting 1,173.
Isn't it higher than that with all the new customers on the extension? No, I guess not. I mean, what would be, you know, between $10, an extra $10 a quarter and another $35 a quarter? What's the midpoint? 20? We have, we have to find a balance between balancing the budget and paying our bills and providing the service to customers and, and, and not raising it. I mean, last time we raised it, it was $100 a year, so it was at a quarter, $25 a quarter.
Like that 235s would get you, would get you in the black for, for 2025.
Right, and that would be a $35 a quarter raise.
Yes.
And the last time we raised it, it was $20 a quarter. I, I just feel that's too high. What would, what would $20 a quarter give us? Which is what we did last time, or 25? No, actually, it was 25 because we raised it $100 a year. So last time we did it, so what would $25 a quarter give us? Would that get us close?
Uh, that would create a, it's a deficit of 46,060.
I don't think we have to make a decision today, but I think it's helpful to know what the options are and where it'll get us. Right?
Hmm.
Okay. But I feel at $10, I mean, I know people hate to have their rates raised, but $10 is going to be too low to balance our budget.
So the chart that's on the screen there. I mean, I'm looking at this paper, which has a lot more numbers, right? So that's.
Yeah. This is a summer, obviously, it's a summarized.
But here we're not, that chart's not showing any kind of debt.
Uh, well, the revenue wouldn't change.
Right.
Well, strike that, the revenue, well, sorry, I apologize.
Where's the debt service?
Oh, hold on, because this is the expense.
Okay, your eyes are better than mine.
So the expense has already changed doing the, making the 50% commit.
Oh, Jesus. Why is it not letting me go back?
So, so with the, so with the $25 a quarter, that would, that would up the, the revenue to 1.259 million dollars instead of the 1.189. And now the expense. So now the expense, keeping in mind with the change in the, that would be 1.305 million compared to the 1.271, but that's, that's also with the 50% with the change in the tap and fee portion, which shows an expense for the sewer fund.
I don't think we're going to resolve all this tonight, but maybe you could just send us a summary of changing the tap in fee breakdown to 50/50 to capital and to the regular budget. And then also giving us just the summary, like of these basic expenses and revenues of, say, a $10 a quarter rate increase, a $25 a quarter rate increase, and the other one was 35, which is the break even. So we at least, we can continue to consider this because I, I'm not ready to make this decision today, but I think the information is going to be helpful.
So we had this discussion because I did want to make sure we're looking at year over year, what does it keep the, what keep the lights on revenue? So we are showing that deficit. And then to reintroduce the tap in fees, we will, we do plan to get, that's a real number.
Yeah.
And we do have fund balances existing.
Yes.
So it's not all terrible, but yeah, we want to make sure we're tracking and trending that we don't continue to chip away at that, you know, more than 10 or 15% a year. So I, I don't know if we need to go to clear it out immediately, especially with the tap in fees coming our way. And we're confident on some of those based on breaking ground. So it could be a conversation of a small increase and then we'll have a better idea next year how quickly some other applications are moving.
Yeah, I mean, that was the change. Obviously, last year, we didn't have any of the subdivisions. We, we went ultra conservative, not anticipate, you know, not, so it has obviously made a dramatic swing, certainly with, with the tap in fees. And then kind of having a better idea when we can expect the, 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 those customers to get online.
Yeah, I just think the challenge is long term, when these subdivisions are done in three years, there will be no more tap in fees. So if we get too far behind with our income, I mean, I guess, I guess my attitude is, you know, nobody likes to get an increase, but I think people prefer getting small increases as opposed to big increases. So if we can regularly have small increases to keep as close to the black as possible, I don't want to kick the can down the road and then slap people with a big increase, which nobody likes. I mean, if we can do a smaller increase in the future, that would be better than a bigger increase. So I, I just, anyway, that's, that's how I feel. I just think we have to be realistic and do our best to balance the budget. And the last increase we had was $25 a quarter. And that was like four years ago, three or four years ago?
It started in 2022, I believe.
Three years ago, okay.
The, the numbers that you showed in the original version of the PowerPoint that we have.
Yes.
That had a built in increase of $10?
Yes, 10, yeah, 10 a quarter or 40 a year, yes.
Was that spelled out somewhere? Did I miss that or?
Uh, I had it in the write-up.
That's what I thought.
It would have also been.
Okay.
There's a sewer, there's a sewer charge sheet where you see number of EDUs, the quarterly rate. That's where you, you see the progression of, and that's, that matches the self liquidating report, the updated self liquidating report that you guys now have.
Yeah, and just, just as a side note, I'm the only one at this table who has public sewer. I actually have Shrinksville Sewer and they raise their rates every two to three years like clockwork. So I see the raise, I expect it, it's small. And personally, I think that's, that's good to be able to expect it and not have surprises. All right, anyway.
Also, just confirming, we're all square with the general fund, with the sewer fund?
It, that's been, that, that transfer has been happening regularly, there's no carryover from year to year.
So it's done?
It, it, it gets squared away either halfway through the year or three quarters, but, but that's, that's not part of the balance, that's not taken a, like as far as the balance, that's coming out of the, the balance. It's not a, it's not a balance, it's building up year over year.
Right, but I meant a few years ago, right? Didn't we, the general fund had to put money into the sewer fund?
Correct.
That, that has been reconciled.
Yes.
All right. And you know, part of the reason why that had to happen is because, again, we weren't collecting enough money in our capital fund to deal with things that come up. And this has been a problem ever since I've been coming to meetings here.
Does the board have any more questions about the sewer fund? Are we ready to move on to the general fund?
Yeah, kind of me.
Okay, so let's move on to the general fund.
All right. So I guess, well, the, I guess the other part of the sewer capital fund would be the projects as part of the sewer capital for next year. And I do have Tom here, if you've guys, if the board has questions. Some of this, some of this was on for this year's. I did move the Zieglerville planning into the CIP as part of that. So that's, that's been moved into there, that the board has already approved, that's already blessed that, that moving forward. These would also be on your, you've got a capital project purchases kind of packet that, this is on the last, last page of that. As far as projects and what we have, as, as far as those amounts go. It's, there's, there's a sheet like this. It won't be in the self liquidating report. It, it'll, yeah, I, I broke them, I, I took it out of the, so it'd be easier for you guys. You've got it. But it'll say, yeah, on the top of it, it'll say capital projects. But it'll say, yeah, on the top of it, it'll say capital projects slash purchases. And the sewer fund's at the end. It's on the back, it, yes.
So is this list for the next several years, or is this proposed for next year?
So, so what?
And are they in order of priority?
Uh, they are not in order by priority. What's on, what's on as part of the presentation, that's all proposed for 2025. I did put out to 2028 on the docu, on the, on kind of the summary. But Tommy would be able to tell you what maybe would be of more priority.
Well, there, there are eight, I count eight items on this proposed for 2025 for a total of about? Thank you. And are we going to have that money in the capital fund for next year, the $220,000?
Well, it looks like this is over three years.
No, well, that's the to, what, sorry, that's the total, I mean, just the 2025 items, so if you subtract that. So, so that would bring it down to more like 75,000 or 80,000, I think, if you take those three items out, or even less.
What's that?
Maybe like 90,000?
Here, let me stop sharing.
88,622.
Okay, so the items on this list for 2025 come up to 88,662. And I'm assuming we would have that in our capital fund.
Yeah, that's definitely not matching what's on my screen. I didn't escape far enough. All right, let's try to put on. Yeah.
So again, the 2025 items come to about $89,000. There's nothing for, is 2026 is 55,000, there's nothing for 2027, and 2028 is about 85,000.
Yes.
So if we have 100,000 a year going to capital, we can cover that, no problem. And, and also, that money is for things that just happened.
Which with, and, and certainly with the, even with the 30.5% of the tap-in fee, but certainly with the 50% of the tap-in fee, yeah, that'll, that'll, the, the sewer capital, it will be in, is, I mean, that was another thing through the self-liquidating. It's in good shape by the end of the term. Now, we had to take out some of the big projects, but that, those would probably be projects we would be looking to finance potentially and not pay cash for anyway, as far as the self-liquidating report, but.
I'll ask Tommy questions, it's easier. It looks like one of the items for 2026 is, it says upgrade of tank bypass suction line for headworks building. So that bypass line is used for, for what?
Make sure your mic's on, you're going to have to talk into a mic, Tommy.
Well, we bypass to clean the headworks out.
Right.
We do not have a suction line for it, we got to drop 30 feet of line down, 4-inch line down the hole.
Okay.
This way, we can just hook up up on top, like we did the lift stations.
Okay. So basically, it would be there all the time.
It would be there.
Yeah. And then we're also looking further in the future, there's a $60,000 estimate for storage building. I guess that's just for equipment that's out in the weather right now, or?
Out in equipment, and in, we, we store a lot of expensive stuff in the headworks.
Okay, yeah, that's not good.
It's not, but we were using the UV room, but every time you park something in there with rubber, it gets ruined.
Okay.
Because of the ultraviolet. And at some point, if we ever have to add another filter, or the other blower that we have room for, it was designed to fit in, to go to full capacity, we lose that space as well. We're, we're storing stuff where future equipment goes.
In the, in the room where the UV is?
In the UV room, in the blower building.
Okay.
We got stuff stashed everywhere.
Yeah, I, I know.
In hindsight, when they did the design, I didn't think about storing stuff.
Yeah. So the storage building would probably go up slope somewhere?
About the only place we can put it is if we have enough ground clearance, our property line from the neighbor over here, we would put it up alongside the SBR.
Okay.
On the top of the hill, because that's the only place that hasn't flooded yet.
Yeah, I was going to say, that floods and you're really in trouble.
At that point, I'm going to make sure I'm at home.
Yeah. Okay.
Would it make sense to move up the storage building a year or two, instead of waiting until 2028?
It could, I mean.
Is that, is that important?
We'd have to manipulate stuff around. We, we put a program together we thought would work best.
Well, I mean, there's nothing in 2027, for example, on this list. I'm just, I'm just asking, I mean, this is, this seems like it's very important. I mean, if, if equipment is deteriorating, that costs us money too.
Yeah.
What size is this building?
We didn't, we didn't come up with that yet.
What size do you need?
Well, they need to have to buy property off the fire company, and we ain't going down that route. Building's never big enough. So what I got to find out is what the regulations are for property line setbacks and all that, and see what we can fit in there. But if we're going to kind of get the nod to move forward, we'll move forward on starting to lay some of that out. Otherwise, I'm just wasting time.
I mean, the, the advantage with the shape of the capital improvement fund, we could move really all these projects up if the board want, so chose. I mean, certainly, what we're, we're not trying to put anything down that we don't think, you know, it's, it's even like with cameras, and like, right now, we have no cameras on, on any of the pump stations or any of the, you know, or entries. So we, we don't try to have anything on here that's not, that's not a, a need or a strong want. If, 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 you know, when you, when the board's looking at things as far as, you know, how far to move something up, or... We tried to spread it out to kind of help, to kind of help the fund build up some cash, and we didn't, honestly, we didn't move these, we didn't move these from this year's budget, as far as the storage building and stuff.
I mean, just a thought, I mean, we can discuss this next year as well, but maybe we could move that up.
We can make it special, we can dedicate some time to doing the legwork.
Well, you, I mean, you guys have to decide whether it's important, tell us.
Well, everything's important, you guys got to make the call whether we can afford to spend the money.
Yeah.
Because if we did everything that was important, we'd get all the new trucks, I'd have a new shop, you know what I mean?
And we'd all, we'd be broke.
We'd be so broke that nobody see daylight forever.
Tell me something, like 20 by 40.
If we could fit that in there, that would, we could, we'd have to make do with that.
So if you need storage, then what would happen if you just get a 20 by 40, one of these secret? For now?
I get, we could do that, I guess.
Not expensive.
No, they're not.
Or two 20 by 20s, you know?
Well, we, we rent one, we rent a 20.
You're talking peanuts compared to.
We're renting, we're renting.
You mean, you mean as an interim measure until we have the money for the, yeah?
That way, you're going to get started, you're going to get stuff out of your buildings that you want to get out of your way, and give you more room in the buildings.
That, we, we mentioned that before, it just never went anywhere.
I mean, $160,000, and then you're looking at down the road two years from now, get a board by these storage.
We mentioned the storage things, and that never went anywhere, so we went a different avenue.
I mean, I guess if, if the activity is just storage, and what Terry's saying, it's fine, but if you want to have storage, but also the ability to work on something, right, you're not going to, shipping container, you're not going to be able to really do much work on it. But if that, if that's the need, then, you know.
At some point, you guys are going to have to split the two departments. You're going to need a shop to work, you're going to have to have separate tools and all that other stuff.
Right.
Because right now, we need the welder, we take it down from the other shop, we need torches, we take it from the other shop.
Right.
So, but for temporary thing, that secret would work.
But if you build another building, and you're going to put welders in that in there, you're going to have electricity, you're going to have.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot of, a lot of air.
There's a lot of coal there.
Sure.
You could, you could run your welder in all one of the lower buildings if you had the room.
Well, the welder's gas, so.
Well, okay, just saying, you could that's one of the.
Yeah. The only dry storage I got is a million-dollar room.
You really just want storage, right, correct?
Storage, and hopefully someday would be working space as well. Because right now, I have a workbench set up in the control room for the pumps. We have, for all our dry storages in the control room for the SBR.
So if you got a container now, at least you could get some of the stuff out of your building for storage until down the road if you do have the money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was asking, whether you needed the workspace down the road.
Yeah.
In addition to the storage, right?
Yeah, we can definitely look at that.
Okay, any, anything else on this, the capital projects for sewer fund? Do you have anything you want to highlight for us that we haven't talked about already?
Nope.
Okay.
All right.
Now, do you want to have Tommy stick around for the discussion in the general fund about?
Sure do.
So maybe we should do public works first, so we don't have to stick around for three, three hours with Terry.
These next, I, I've got liquid fuels, open space, and the ARPA, we can, we can plow through those pretty quick.
Yes, please.
Okay, so liquid fuels fund, open space fund, and the ARPA COVID relief fund, which is, will not be quite dead in 2025 yet. So liquid fuels, uh, current proposal is for salt purchases for snow removal. Oil and chip, um, up to five miles, and payment number four of the F-550 dump truck. There's really not much more to, um, to this fund. So currently, in the proposal, we have a rev, uh, income of 176,308, with an expense of 245, 655, uh, with a negative income of 69,347. And we currently have no paving in next year's proposed budget, um, coming out of liquid fuels or, or the general fund CIP for that matter. And the oil and chip would just be kind of continue the maintenance, the top coat or the top seal of the maintenance of our current roads. We do know we've got some, we do have some smaller roads, we've got to still remedy in this, in the shape of, or in the sense of paving, but we're, I, we need to have further conversation and nail that, nail those projects down. Because I know we still have, we have South Ryanford yet, there's a section of Babington, I think even North Ryanford, I know you guys patched North Ryanford, but. Any questions, concerns? Once again, this is a fund, we don't have to budget, but we just do as part of coming up with the plan from year to year, so. All right. Open space fund. This was the collection start, for this fund started in 2021. We still, we still have the, uh, 333 Southford Station Road, um, as the board may or, may or may not recall. Um, I think at the, at the soonest, this was going to get done by November. I'm anticipating this may not happen until next year. And this was the commitment of up to $75,000 for that conservation easement on that property. And the second property through the Ag Preservation Board, I did get confirmation that this is going to get, um, the county has received the state for, or, has been approved to receive the state funds, and they will be receiving that in spring. So the 8-Zep Road, which the board, um, committed $30,000 towards that preservation, so that I do know will be happening next year, and that's reflected in next year's proposed budget. So what we have there is 114,000, which is primarily earned income tax, and then, uh, total expense of 142,000 with a net.
EIT.
Sorry, EIT, did I say, I didn't say earned income tax? Sorry. Uh, with a negative in, uh, net income of negative 27,817. Once again, this is another fund, it's not, we're not mandated to, to budget it, but it's good to have a plan for, for next year. And I did add an open space mailer that the committee has been talking about, doing here sooner. Any questions? Okay, the ARPA COVID relief fund. So, oh, I got a typo there. These funds have to be used or allocated toward an approved and planned project by the end of 2024. So we have money that the board dedicated or allocated for the Spring Mount Sidewalk Project, which will be done next spring. And then the Cobal Park Rehabilitation Project Phase One, which we have a grant out for. So we're waiting to, we're still waiting for, to find out if, uh, if we receive that grant funding. So these would be projects that would be planned and allocated, so we'd be able to utilize those funds, um, next year.
So when are we going to hear about the Cobal Park Grant? Hopefully, this year.
I, I, that's, that's what we're anticipating. I know we've got, you know, we're almost up to two months. And I will say, what's in the proposed budget is, I've sent like 72,000 of former costs of the meeting room upgrades and the generator, original generator, with anticipating that we've got to, we've got to find a way to spend that money. That's, that's when I, when I told the board, as we get closer to the end here, you know, those are, those would, and those would have been authorized reimbursements with the original criteria.
Right, but when are we going to hear about the grant?
Uh, I, I don't have a, I, I don't have a timeframe on that.
When do they normally tell people?
I thought it was November, I, it, once again, this is another grant I've, I've not submitted before, so.
Okay, well, hopefully, we hear soon, and if it's a no, then we'll spend the money on something else we need.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions on this? Okay. All right, now to the general fund. So the 2025. So the 2025 draft general fund budget summary. Overall, revenue is budgeted to increase 1.3% from the 2024 forecast. The impact of the general fund for the two current subdivisions consisting of 85 homes that started site construction in 2024. That would be in the form of real estate transfer, real estate taxes, and earned income tax. Currently, our earned income taxes projected to increase 2.8% year over year. I do have real estate with an average increase of 3.1% over the next three years. And that would be based on the subdivisions getting built out.
Sorry, how many of those? Forty-two plus 39, which is what? Seventy-eight?
There's a total of 85 for Melbourne.
Eight-five? All right.
Yeah.
Thank you for correcting me. How many of those 85 new homes do we expect to be finished and occupied by the end of next year?
I, I did a rough estimate of 40% for next year.
It's like 36, 37?
Yeah, it ends up being like 38, I believe.
Thirty-eight?
And then I did 45% for 2026, and then the remainder in 2027.
Okay.
With the anticipated build out of a two to three year period, so. We'll know more, and obviously they're still going through the site construction, so. The Lower Frederick Fire Company has asked to raise the fire tax from 0.36 mils to 0.5 mils.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
The Lower Frederick Fire Company, and I report, I would reported this to you guys back in the summer after our meeting. They are asking for the board to consider a fire tax from raising it from 0.36 mils to 0.5 mils. And oh, by the way, can I share the good news on the truck?
Sorry, would that be consistent with what Schwenksville wants to do?
I believe that they're asking the same as Schwenksville. And just as some good news that I found out, I think this afternoon, the fire company did get a grant of $400,000 towards their truck purchase that we submitted last, last year, so.
It's great news.
I believe they were budgeting to get none. So that was, that was part of the, that was part of the discussion when we met in the summer, so. Something's better than nothing. We'd put in for a million, but I'd say. And that was the LS8, that was part of that LS8 grant program. Utilizing inflation of 5% and how this impacts our current future purchasing. Hiring of a new police officer and public works employee. Overall expenses shown to be budgeted to increase 5.5 with no CIP purchasing or new hiring. What was asked of me with the general fund was to create a budget as if really we did no changes and kind of kept the status quo. And then discussed hiring and purchasing. Which actually puts us as a surplus currently of $18,000. And that's the impact of the capital improvement CIP plan that was originally budgeted at $406,444 for the set aside and proposed 2025 projects or purchases slash projects. And then future projects, purchases, and how to finance, looking at grants and/or financing. So on the revenue side, as you can see, I have real estate taxes growing up to $913,000, 36.7% of the budget. Real estate transfer up from this year's forecast to 189,541, which would be 7.6% of the revenue budget. Earned income tax going from 1.043 million to 1.067. That's 42.9% of the revenue, and then the, the other smaller buckets for a total of $2.506 million.
I have a question about removing all the proposed additional expenditures. Does that also assume that there's no transfer to the capital improvement fund?
Correct, because that would have been one of, that's, that's, that 406 is obviously a major expense to the, to the general fund.
So, so the proposal is to transfer $400,000 to the capital fund?
Well, that, that, that was what was in draft one that was presented, and now currently with what I'm presenting tonight, I've taken that out. So that you guys, instead of, instead of getting the, the big red number that we had with draft one, now we're kind of starting at a we're starting at the bottom and working our way up instead of throwing everything that we want and or need to do as far as additional as far as purchasing projects, what have you. But this would, what, what you're looking at as far as the general fund is if we just kept things status quo.
No, I, I understand that, but as Chuck said earlier, and I agree with him 100%, kicking the can down the road never does us any good. Because we are going to have to do things, and we are going to have to pay for things, and if we don't have any money to do it, we're going to get even further in the red. So I think, I mean, I'd like to have you highlight in the list, in the cap, for the capital fund, what we probably really need to do. Like if a computer dies, we need to buy a new computer. If a generator dies, we need to buy a new generator. You know? So I'd, I'd like to, you know, look through that list and for you to highlight what, what we really are going to need to do in the next three to four years, because we have to figure out a way to pay for that.
Okay, yep, that's, I mean, that's, that, that conversation's coming.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
There's a slide.
Super, all right.
I was just following direction with how this was. Yeah, this is just revenue. We haven't gotten to the fun, the, the nasty part, which is the expenses. So this is just the breakdown percent wise. You guys see this every year. As far as obviously real estate tax and earning income taxes are main revenues sources for the general fund. 24.6 increase in EIT tax revenue or 2.4% from the 2024 forecast. 23.9 increase in real estate transfer revenue, 14.4 increase from this year's forecast. 40.5,000 increase in real estate revenue, 4.7 increase from the 2024 forecast. This also includes the request by the Lower Frederick, for the fire company to raise millage to 0.5. That is built in here. $27,000 increase in overall revenue or 1.1% increase from the 2024 forecast. So as far as this goes, the only thing that I would say would impact revenue would be to change the millage back to the current 3.6. That's the only thing that would be impacting, that would be a swing. So you're seeing a little higher revenue. Which is about, it's about a $40,000 swing with, with that, with that increase. Yep. Okay, so here's just the summary revenue line items. With this year's budget, the forecast, the proposed next year's budget, and the forecast through 2029. As you can see, it grows gradually and then drops a bit with the anticipation that our real estate transfer will drop primarily. Earned income tax, this will be an ever, you know, especially with adding new houses. You know, as I think you guys posed a question to me last the general meeting as far as EIT, you know, we're going through this transition with getting probably more working families moving into homes that may have been retirees or, and or also having some of the houses that have been, were not living in now having residence, so. We can, I would expect or anticipate EIT to continue to grow till it gets to a point, it'll, it'll eventually kind of flatline as far as that goes. And that's also that increase in bump in permits. Any questions here?
As far as the new developments concerned, Lennar, there's no, like when we did Arcadia Station, you know, that I think with Metropolitan sold it to the builder, we got one transfer tax, and then when the builder sold it to the homeowner, we got another one. That's not going to happen this time around, right?
I honestly, I'm not sure, because I, I'm not sure how that's going to shake out, shake out. I would expect Lennar owns it now. There'll be, there'll be one transfer tax. We would have gotten, I'll have to look, I whenever that property's sold, we would have gotten that, we would have got that in total for the whole, for the
For the whole thing.
Yep, we won't, yeah, we won't get, we won't be double dipping, I guess, for each parcel, I guess. Is that your question?
Yeah, I don't know how that all went down, whether we already received that transfer tax or whether that's kind of come piecemeal as the lots build.
I, I'd have to confirm that, but that would have had to been part of the, the, because the property changed hands, we, we would have gotten that transfer tax.
Okay.
Any other thing, any questions on revenue?
I know this is coming up on the next slide, but just I want to highlight that the revenue is pretty stagnant for the next five years. And clearly, our expenses are going to go up, so that's a problem.
Yeah. It's not. I don't know. It must. That's what I That's what I normally do, but for some reason, when it, when it's in, when it's in PowerPoint mode, it seems, it doesn't seem to like that. So when I, when we backed out, it, I think it probably paused.
The, the other thing you could try is put it in, like, don't put it in the full screen mode, put it in like preview mode. Do you have the other slides down the side? Sometimes it likes that better.
I'm seeing it.
Interesting.
Because I'm starting this, you know, now I could just not, I could not put, start the slideshow and just. Okay, yeah, I know what I've got is different from you. You're saying keep it like this? Which might be why. Bob, can you tell me what they can see right now? The only problem is, is the stuff's not going to come in as I click. It's going to kind of take away from the presentation. Can they see the general fund revenue right now? Uh, we're not even seeing it. Yeah, there's, there's definitely something in the presentation that Zoom doesn't like. Okay, I can see that. Page 20, okay. Do you just want me to keep it like this? All right. All right, any other questions on revenue? All right, so the general fund expenses, 2.7% increase in overall labor. Keep in mind, this also includes benefits. 8.9% increase in overall O and M, that's using the 5%, that's with the 5% inflation. 21.8% increase in emergency services slash professionals. That proposed increase for the fire company would, was, be 27.3% of that increase. And a 77.1% decrease in remaining expenses, and that's with taking the proposed, the, the CIP expenses out of the general fund and new hires for police department and public works, and permit property management software purchase that's still was built into the general fund. And then ongoing, as far as expenditures that we're reviewing is obviously road repairs, paving, storm sewer repairs. This hasn't really changed much in the last three or four years. They continue to update ordinances during the year, continue to remove dead ash trees from the township parks, which is an ever ongoing battle. Working with the park and park board for park continued park improvements and additional programming. And then I added the additions of the police officer, public works member, and that software. So as far as the percentage breakdown, as you can see, police labor and O and M is 34%. Public works is 22%, and then admin labor and operation made costs is 16%. Our fire and ambulance is 10% of the overall. And I did do something different this year. I did break out the insurance property liability, which was buried under the which was, which was buried under the board of supervisors line item. That's now its own, that's got its own bucket, and that's at 2%.
So this breakdown is assuming none of these bulleted additions in the lower paragraph. Or what is it not, what is it assuming, what is it not assuming?
The only thing that it, it would be assuming would be the, the millage increase. Any, any projects, hiring, or the transfer to the CIP has been taken out of what you guys are looking at right now.
So when we have expenses, like when there's a hole in the roof, or when we have to replace a new vehicle, where's that money going to come from? I guess it's kind of like a rhetorical question.
Unfortunately, not ARPA.
Without, without putting money in the capital improvement fund, where, how are we going to pay for these things?
No, I, correct, I mean, that's
That's, that's an issue, so. I think you know, I think we have to grapple with the fact that we are a modern community with a lot of demands for services that cost a lot of money. And there's, there's no place to shave the budget. I mean, we can, we can say we're not going to hire any more people, but we still have to repair the roads. We still have to fix things that break. We can't run away from those, and there's no money in the budget for that.
So as I talked about the, I talked about this last year when the board was considering creating the CIP. What you're also seeing is that for the most part, the general fund, the year over year, it's labor and operation and maintenance costs. We try to keep the projects and purchases into, you know, in the CIP, which is where obviously
No, I'm sorry, I, I understand all that. I guess what I'm saying is, we have a stagnant, stagnant, the money coming in is not growing. But the money going out is growing, which means our deficit is going to get bigger and bigger every year. Period. That's what I'm seeing in this. So there's no place for any extra money to come unless someone wins the lottery and donates the money to the township. That's just, that's what this budget is showing me. Is, is, income is not changing, and expenses are going up. So you know, we can, we can keep taking from the reserves, but we're going to be literally broke in how many years? Two, three, four? you know, we can, we can keep taking from the reserves, but we're going to be literally broke. And how many years? Two, three, four?
Right now 2030, that's a big project in there, but that's even with
That's five years. So in five years, we'll literally be broke. So we have to think about you know, how to resolve this. So the only way I see to resolve it is we can start firing people. Or we find a way to bring extra money in. And whether we put money in the capital improvement fund or not, expenses are going to come up and we have to pay for them.
Now we move on.
I mean, does anybody disagree with me that this is showing? Thank you. That's, yeah, the next slide.
Looks like Linda is raising her hand.
Can we put the next slide up?
Okay. Yep. All right, I got you.
Okay.
Okay, so this is showing this year's budget and projection. As you can see with the, the current proposed draft. With a total expense of 2.488 million dollars, net income of 18,000. As you can see, there's no transfer to the capital reserve. And those other items that I previously spoke have been, were removed from the general fund expenses.
So it looks to me like we're going to be broke before 2030. Looks like 2029 is the year.
Yes, currently, that's, yes.
Well, again, the only way to do that is to start firing people. Well, Terry, most of the expenses are on people. That's, that's what most of the expenses are, people and their wages and benefits. So we either raise taxes or we start firing people. I don't see any other way around it.
So I, I do have a question. Where, where do our CDs fit into this picture?
They're, they're part of the overall reserve, like general fund balance. I keep them in the ba, like they, I don't, I don't separate them for budgeting purposes. Because if, if we really had to take
So you just took all the CDs and just lumped them right in?
That's, yeah, those are, so for the CDs that we currently have, those are all built into the reserves or the cash balances for, for all those funds that have CDs.
That's a good question. Yeah, how much do we have in reserves?
So with this, so with the current proposed budget, we would have 2.162 million dollars at the end of 2025. As far as general fund reserve.
What do we have today?
I, I, I don't know what we have right now, Terry.
But is it close to
I'm forecasting us the end of the year, the end of the year at 2.144 million dollars.
The end of this year?
Yes.
It should be about the same because you're saying that if we don't do anything, our net income or if we end up with 18,000 plus. So it really should be, whatever we have this year would be the same.
Yes.
So we're going to be completely broke if there's no catastrophes, if we don't hire any more people. If we don't buy anything, like replace, so this, this would mean not replacing any police vehicles. Is that in there too?
Actually, in those other blue columns to the right, you have the transfers to the capital.
Yeah, so, so I only did, I only did this for this year.
Oh, it's just this year. Okay.
So, so the, the CIP continues on in the, in the future, but for, for budget discussions, I only did it for this year.
But I guess my question is when we need to replace a police vehicle or a road crew vehicle, that money's not in this budget.
Not for next year, no.
And if we have to replace the roof, the money's not in the budget.
Not for next year. I believe that's, we've got that in the CIP a couple of years down the road.
I think, you know, I mean, Jason is just doing what we asked him to do, which is we want to see the numbers, like what is it just to keep the lights on? Because last year it was very difficult. Like it was difficult for me and I can't imagine what it was for anybody who was in the audience. You know, is the, what's a need and what's an ask? And, and you know, this way at least it makes it very clear. Nobody's saying we're not going to do this, we're not going to do that. We just wanted to see what it looked like, you know, stripped away, just to keep the lights on. That was my understanding of, of this exercise, so. You know, so now we get to the point of, you know, capital reserves. You know, to, to your point, this is, this is what it takes to run the township. I don't think that there's any big buys in here or anything that, you know. My understanding. Right? We're not buying anything big this year.
Not currently proposed. The only, the only thing that I will say is in the capital improvement plan, because we, we were, we're the project's been approved would be the, the sidewalk project, but that's going to be a reimbursement.
Right.
That's, some of that's coming from ARPA's. We'll have to pay that money upfront. That'll come from the county. And then also the Cobble Park rehabilitation phase one, that's in there. And then there's a bulletproof vest, which the police have to replace, I believe it's every five years, chief. So those are the only three capital items that we had to keep in there because we're, we're, we're locked into them. Everything else, so this other, where I, where I kind of broke out the projects and stuff. Pretty much everything in there is, is, that's got 2025 estimated timeline. Is what was taken out of this current proposal.
So you said three things. It was, one was a vest.
Bulletproof vest.
And one was Cobble Park.
And then Spring Mount, the Spring Mount sidewalk project.
Okay, but Spring Mount sidewalk is sort of in and out, right? I mean, there's still
So is the, the Cobble is all, the Cobble is also, because that was money dedicated that the board allocated from ARPA.
Right.
So that's, that's, yeah, we're waiting on the grant.
We spend it and then we get it back.
Correct.
So really it's just the vest.
Yes.
The other two are revenue neutral.
Yeah, yes, we didn't, in this year's budget, I did not put those projects in there. I only, I only allocate like for the Spring Mount. I only put in our portion. I left out the 200,000 that we have to pay first. And so I, I was kind of correcting that ship since, especially since those projects will be next year anyhow, so. That's why you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have seen them there as part of the CIP. Do we want to get to the point of discussing those projects at this point or?
Everything in the capital or the three we just talked about?
I just was noting that the three are built into this. And obviously the vest, the vest is covered because we have, we have, we have funds that got allocated from previous years and this year's.
So then there's three things, everything else is
Yes. Yeah.
Is what?
Not included.
Not included.
These are all above, above and beyond.
Sorry, I was reading your, I assume.
I looked away.
I mean, which, which of these do we really need and which of them are nice to have? Can you kind of go through it?
Do you want to move to that slide?
Yeah. Okay, so as I, as I previously said, budget revenue for the CIP shows at 525 to 14, because this includes the the grants and then ARPA COVID relief funds. For the committed projects and then interest and sale of assets. And this is where it breaks down those proposed projects that I had just told, talked to the, or confirmed with you guys. That's, that, that's built into this current budget.
I've got document digitization on the top of my list.
That's, I've got that at 2028, so.
What about for next year? Camera system?
Camera system. So we have a current camera system. We actually don't, can't do a 360 around the, around the building. This was in this year's budget. I'd have to revisit this. I did get a quote or two, but we have, and like we have no cameras on the backside of the building. So this was one of those, I don't, I don't know where you kind of call it want slash need.
Well, we have a police department here. I think that's important. I mean, what do you think?
I mean, it's good to have it security wise. I mean, you also have the ambulance that's downstairs too. And unfortunately, the way that the world is, having the, a second set of eyes knowing what we're walking out to. I mean, I know, I understand that there's a cost associated. But I think the, the safety aspect, not only for the employees, but also people that are coming here, you know, using a domestic violence situation. You know, it's, especially if a person's in talking to us or ambulance, we know if that perpetrator is there lying in wait.
I, I agree and that's a small cost. It's just me.
And also proposing a camera system at the public works building, which right now we've got, which I'm actually kind of surprised motioning agents don't happen to the building, or maybe they just feel sorry for the building. It's not worth.
Yeah, we talked about three other in the sewer.
Yeah.
Three other camera systems. Yeah, so I would hope that they're all going to be integrated or at least
Yeah, that was, that'll be my plan, Terry, not to try to piecemeal it, which would be more expensive. So I think initially I got quotes for the township building that seemed to be the lowest hanging fruit, so to speak. But we would, because I, I think the struggle we might have, and I don't know, technology wise is could with the pump stations and, and have an electric to them. And how, you know, but I hadn't, I, I think I had mentioned it to a couple of the vendors, but we hadn't, I hadn't gotten it farther than that. But yes, I would, I would be proposing to try to do as, all at once and then move on.
So what would the cost be for those three camera systems? Are they approximately the same or?
I kind of estimated based on what we initially got in. That probably looks light now that I think about it. I'll have to, honestly, Marla, I gotta, I'll have to, we'll have to actually get quotes for the other buildings to get a true cost. Because like I said, I don't, I don't know what, what will have to go into the actual installation of those cameras. Outside of the township building.
So you're, we're talking about cameras for the township building, public works. The two pump stations and the, and the sewer treatment plan is 33114.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm seeing some computers on this list. I mean, I'm assuming computers have a lifespan and when they're done, they're done.
Yeah, I usually, usually with computers, it's usually five to seven years.
So I mean, I think we should build some of those computer costs into our budget because that's pretty predictable. And people can't, I mean, I don't know what other people think. You can't work without a computer.
I was thinking the same thing about the bulletproof vests. Should just be baked into their, 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 their regular budget.
Yeah, I, I, I pop those out just so that we're aware of them and they don't get buried in the general fund like a line item where we have to, where we have to pop it out. That's, that's part of why, even though like the bulletproof vest is, it's not a large cost. It's really about giving us trackability, so it doesn't get buried in a line item where we have to, we have to track that differently if it's, if it's in the general fund.
And those items seem to be significantly, they're, they're small. I mean, when I think capital improvement line item, it's, you know, something over 25,000.
Yeah, it's honestly, a big part is the visibility. It also allows the, the, the board for you guys to discuss it. So you're kind of aware of where, you know, because it is, it, you know, it is an asset. It is something that the police officer has to have, so it also adds to the discussion. But also lets us, you know, prepare the future. So we, we basically like with the, with the vest, we pay, we spread them out over the five years. As we've gotten new ones and as we've gotten the new officers and stuff, so. But that's, that's even, even with the computers, realistically, those are, those are kind of minimal amounts, but that's, that's why I've always kind of taken the approach, put them in the capital, the CIP, and that way it helps the discussion. And in this case, I would have had a lot more cleaning up in the general fund, taking those out of individual line items, so.
Yeah, we also have police vehicle purchases, which are predictable and need to occur.
Not this year.
Not this year. No.
I mean, we just caught up with the police vehicles. So we have a little, a couple of years grace, but not much.
So you have under police department, you have parking carport.
So this is kind of the dilemma we have with the public works facility. We're buying new equipment and it's never, it's, it's outside almost 24/7, 365. So one of the things that Chief and I talked about was getting at least some kind of cover on these vehicles to help kind of take it out of the elements. And kind of extend the life of these vehicles.
So would this cover all the vehicles or some of the vehicles?
Right now, ARF, is there any, I'll see if you can answer.
So with the carport, it would cover all the vehicles that are exposed to the elements. With that carport, I, I would be safe to say it also creates a deterrent. Because there's still equipment that is in the cars that are built in. And right now it goes hand in hand with the camera system. That if somebody wants to, it's very easy to take a window out and start ripping some of the equipment out of there. Like the important equipment is removed, but there's stuff in there that is permanently placed. But where there's a will, there's a way. And somebody rips hard enough, they'll start ripping some of the computers that are out in the car. So right out, right where our door is, basically where, right where the cars are backed in, right from what I was talking, me and Jason were discussing it. Basically butted up right to where the existing wall is, out to that last parking spot.
Is this, is this is for the work vehicles?
Yes. This has nothing with the employees. This is simply township vehicles. And as Jason said, with the amount of money that was invested in the purchases of the two new vehicles, it's going to extend. You know, the vehicle, the quality, a little bit less rust. So the, and, yeah, just be able to back it, yep.
Yep, that's what we kind of envision, kind of lean to.
Like a 45, on a 45 roof. Easy in, easy out, but it prevents people, it's, it's a deterrent. I mean, they still have access, but it's a deterrent.
Now, that's, that's another one we haven't, honestly, with the, till you guys show, it's we've, we've obviously had a lot of projects, I know, since I've been here, so I'm trying to not get too far ahead, but that would be something we'd have to, we'd have to price out. So the number you're looking at was just ballparking.
$72,000. I assume there would be some lighting. I assume there would be some lighting in there.
Some lighting. Probably would be some lighting in there.
Absolutely. I would think that it, some type of lighting. Whether it's like a motion sensor light that's like people have on their houses that you, anyone walking in, it lights up as a, again, deterrent.
Jason, in project number eight for next year, building Township Police Area Carport.
Yeah.
Is that the same thing we're talking about?
Yes.
So that would get deleted, the 79,000 for next year for.
Uh, it's actually in 26. I know we got talking about the carport, but.
Well, 15 is police department parking carport.
Oh, did I have it twice?
It's like in two places.
I apologize.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
So what, is it a 25 or 26?
It's, it was, it was a 26. I apologize.
We were talking about for 26.
Okay, so, okay, because on our sheet, it was showing up in 25 and 26. So all right, so then we don't need to talk about.
That's why you see that amount jumped up. I may have moved it already because as you say, it goes from 72 to 79 with the inflation rate.
Well, you, you heard we have interest, so get prices for next year.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I believe I heard that. Okay.
Tommy, while you're here, could you go over some of the Public Works items and kind of help us understand which absolutely have to be purchased and which maybe can wait, or are they all necessary right away? I think that's on, I think that's like item 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40.
35 is to replace a 22, 20-year-old dump truck. We're going to try and, at one point, it's not going to pass inspection.
Okay, but is this, okay. So that's.
It was scheduled to be replaced in 2021.
So this.
The truck was planned for 20 years.
Okay, so this is going to just drop dead any minute.
It, it could.
Okay.
I mean, it's solid run truck. It's the frame condition and all that stuff.
And Tom, just is built out time, are we still look, is it still like a year, year and a half to, I, I don't, has that gotten any better over the last couple of years? Do you know?
With, if we go, we look at a Western Star, we can get that pretty darn quick.
Okay.
The longest time we have is trying, somebody do the build. Like the truck body is a year and a half to two years out. I haven't heard back from Triad yet on their schedule. The other guy, I spoke to, was two years out as well. So right now, Alpha Project's had a truck sitting at the truck shop waiting to be built for two years. It'll be two years old until they get it.
So that, that, that's the other struggle that's still, at least with, especially with the big dumps, because they are custom. We're not going to see this, you know, in January of next year. So where we have it as on 2025, that's, I guess, if I'm hearing you correctly, it's something we would want to try to commit sooner than later. Because it's going to, there is going to most likely be a build out time.
Now, can we also pay for this on installments? Or do we have to pay it all upfront?
So, um, I mean.
On delivery?
I mean, honestly, you know, as an option, you know, this is something we could look to finance. If the board so choose, I mean, I, I, what I can tell you now is I did reach out, I talked to Darryl Peck from Concord. And we pulled some of these projects such as the carport, the, the parking lot, a couple of the equipments for the Public Works, Public Works facility to look at what financing might look like, which would obviously free up cash today as opposed to, you know, you know, buying stuff outright. Much like you guys did when we bought the 550 that, that's, that's going through the, the liquid fuels fund right now. So that, that would be, that would be certainly an option. And what's the thing with Public Works and/or assets? You do have usually that seven, 10-year financing because you've got much longer shelf life. Like with the police stuff, that's the stuff with the police vehicles, that's the, that's what we would be looking to probably just buy outright because your financing is, because they, they, they have a shelf life. Police vehicles tend, tend to have a five-year shelf life and stuff. So, and talking to Darryl, you know, that, that, that would always be out there for us as a possibility.
So, so can we use liquid fuels money for any of these vehicle purchases for Public Works?
Yeah, I'll have to take, so with liquid fuels, you can only use up to 25%. You can carry over 25% of your liquid fuels revenue per year. We're, we're utilizing that right now at 20, roughly 21,000 a year that comes off that. So I, I, I'd have to take a look as far as liquid fuels, what, what allocation we have remaining. I don't think we could do the big truck because that would, that would, I mean, we've only got 400 or we don't have enough in the liquid fuel, that, that's more like 50%, but I'd have to take a look at that, Marla, to see what our allocation is. I just got to pull the liquid fuels, the annual report for that.
So what you're saying is you're already dipping out of that.
We're already dipping out of it with the current truck. That's, yes.
You got to see what might be left a little bit.
Yeah, we might be able to get, you know, the smaller, a smaller piece of equipment, but yeah, we can't, you, you, it's not dollar for dollar. They only allocate so much for equipment purchasing because they, they want you trying to use that liquid fuels for roads. So it has, and it has to be, it has to be a road maintenance piece of equipment. It's 25, it's 25%. It accumulates if you don't use it, but like I said, I, I have to pull that.
And, and the next one's the backhoe?
We're, we're looking to replace, we're looking to acquire a mini excavator. Because they seem to be way more efficient than a backhoe.
And is that the correct cost?
$113,000.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And would you say that is also urgent for 2025?
I, we, yes.
Okay.
We, we've kicked it off the budget the last four years.
Yep, yep. Mower?
Uh, the mower, we, we were, we're trading our mowers out every 10 years. The mower I want to get rid is a 2012.
Okay.
And to, if we do purchase a mini, I have to upgrade my equipment trailer because the trailer I have now is not heavy enough.
So that's the next two items?
That would be the equipment trailers on the list.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, that, that number should be 30. Thank you. Yeah, they just got that number. I apologize.
Which one, what?
That would be the number 39.
Yep.
How much did you say?
38.
38,000.
Yeah.
So we, so we could lose the landscape truck.
Yeah. To get the longer deck and wide ramps and all that stuff.
Didn't you say the landscape trailer goes?
Didn't we say we could, did we talk about just combine it, you know, so we're not, it's not quite as junk?
We could combine, we could let, we could run the landscape trailer for some time. Yeah.
So that would just get pushed out? The video detection system at Springmount Traffic Light, which was in this year's budget, can you explain again what that does, Tommy?
But that, that replaces the loops that are in the road that keep failing from time to time. And they're not working properly at this time. So with that, we don't have the loops. We don't have to worry about them getting salt cut up and milled up. All this other stuff will be, works off of cameras. And I don't know that much more about it other than it's magic.
So, so what I'm hearing you say is that'll actually save us money in the long term?
I, yes.
And, and some aggravation, I think.
Yes.
Okay.
And we were, we had to do some upgrades with that for the traffic light anyway.
Okay, now there's another dump truck in 2026.
Yes, because with the developments coming, we're going to need another truck to move snow.
So are any of them going to have HOAs?
No.
Neither of them?
Nope.
They may have HOAs, but they're, the roads are going to be ours.
They have HOAs, but we.
It's, it's, it's going to be like Springmount where we have Village Road, Village Drive, and then they have the cul-de-sacs or the HOAs. So it's not like Arcadia Station where that, I believe that's all private.
Yeah. We got that one through.
Yeah. It's also why, where'd it go? Where'd it go? Where'd it go? That tractor, number 38.
Oh, yeah.
Where it just says tractor?
Yes.
Tommy, you want to explain what, what the goal for that is?
Uh, number 38 is to, to replace our utility tractor with a, another utility tractor that will allow us to plow with a snow blower to do all the sidewalks we have to do. And at that point, we, for the winter, we could keep it at the sewer plant. And the only thing we'd have to do is to walk behind at this point in time is CVS. We could drive to all the side, drive it all through Springmount and do all these sidewalks.
So we had, we had a snow blower in this year's budget, and this is one of the things that came out of, especially with gaining additional sidewalks. Because that Arcadia sidewalk will be ours whenever that, well, they haven't even started making spurs, but it's two years.
I don't know when the maintenance bonds up on that, but yes.
So they have an HOA, but we have to take care of their sidewalks?
Yeah, because we ended up with open space A. We lucked out.
Yeah.
Open space.
That's that portion, but not all the interior sidewalks?
Just for that open space A.
Okay, gotcha.
And then we got, we got Goshen Road sidewalk.
Goshen Road.
Yeah.
And then we'll have this sidewalk.
Boulder, Crystal. The, well, the sidewalk here. I'll miss it. What other sidewalk am I missing, RJ? Well, we have CVS too.
Why, why don't, why don't Boulder and Crystal take care of their own sidewalks?
Well, because when we did the development, the township thought it would be a smart idea to take responsibility for them.
Okay.
Sidewalk along the open space of Arcadia Station, that'll be dedicated to.
Yeah. That, we already got that one. But that was one of the early developments. We didn't know what we were up against.
I know, because in my neighborhood, we all shovel our own sidewalks.
Oh, your HOAs do.
Yeah, but.
Well, I mean, it's not just an HOA, it's just usually a sidewalk is a homeowner's responsibility.
It's usually a homeowner's responsibility. But when they cut the driveway in for Crystal Drive, it was on the entrance and it became our responsibility as that wall in that bank. And the same with the wall on the other side.
That's the one we got yelled at because we didn't mow it quick enough, did we?
Yep.
Yeah.
Which is why you're asking for an additional person because we have all these new people coming and all this new order. Yeah, okay.
We're gonna have more maintenance.
Yeah.
Just in general, daily.
No, I, yeah.
Well, and this is running the sewer plant with half a, I mean, that's, that's the other factor. And I think I've expressed, I didn't know that living here, that that was the case. So when, when the board brought RJ in, that, that definitely made a significant push to get projects. And you guys, you guys got a lot of stuff done this year because of that. But that would be the continued goal of, as we get more of these open spaces and, you know, we'll have the, you know, eventually the trail. Now, I know some of the trails, it's kind of like with, with Colonial Park, that's a twice a year thing, but it's still something we've got to address with the parks and stuff too. So that's, that's something I'm trying to get a grasp of as far as main hours and stuff for the board, for you guys to kind of be more aware of how many hours they're spending in the parks.
We have a walk coming too for Farmview.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the 30 acres, yeah.
Well, we, uh, the only trail that we, we plowed a walk-in trail at the Global Park. So people can work there all year round. So if we clean that, we're going to have to clean up through the other because people are going to expect it. I haven't had anybody complain about us not cleaning the place park in the 20 years it's been there. Sidewalks have never been plowed.
Since it's open.
I can't not confirm or deny.
Definitely the last couple of years they haven't.
Yeah. But that's, that, obviously that's the struggle with, you know, because obviously the guys are out plowing and that's always this sidewalk work. I mean, I've, even the Township Building, I've grabbed a shovel because I don't expect the guys to come in anytime soon. So it's, it's definitely, it's great getting sidewalks, but when they're our responsibility, it just, it does add to the, it does add to the list. So that's, that's why this tractor was a way for them to, to be able to get those, to get those plowed quicker without getting out of the vehicle and be more mobile.
So just in the Public Works. Around 448, 400, about around 440,000 of what we just heard.
Yeah, that's pretty.
And from the numbers you showed, had no transfer into this fund at this time?
Not right now, yeah, not, yeah.
Keep the lights on.
I, I will say a big portion of that is.
Did you say four something? Uh, I was rounding up and down, but about 438.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, okay. Really round numbers.
It's just 2025.
It's just 2025. And nothing for this go around, Jason, but for future, maybe. It's broken up by Public Works, but even break it up further by equipment, because in the future years, we have some bridge projects.
Yeah.
Which has more maintenance versus equipment, but we don't have to deal with that now.
I think what we're hearing is when these vehicles break down, they're going to have to be replaced. We might as well plan for it. That's the same thing for the police vehicles.
I found the other eight. Yes, there's more, but wait.
So, um, I'll just share the screen. I can't find that. So when I mentioned financing for this discussion, because, you know, now one of the things we haven't mentioned is a new Public Works facility. As you guys would see, it's in your packet. I wrote up a narrative summarizing kind of an expected cost. What we've, what we put in there, and it's, it's still in this budget, was not enough. And as we learned with our current location, we need land along with the facility. So, um, but what we're looking at here as far as potentially looking at financing some of this equipment and projects as opposed to, to sending out cash, that's what you're, that's what you're looking up on your screen now.
Yeah, but financing just means we don't have to pay today, we have to pay tomorrow.
That's correct.
So that's, that's not, I mean, it's just spreading the cost out, but we still have to have the money to pay.
But one, one of the things that I was thinking is it would free up more cash today, you know, because, because one of the things, and, and obviously we knew this when we, when we looked through the CIP last year, we have some catch up to do. That's why these dump trucks and even the police vehicles kind of got bunched together because the township was holding off on, on getting this. So that's.
Otherwise known as kicking the can down the road, so it fell in our lap to deal with.
So it wouldn't be.
When everything's expensive.
It, it wouldn't be uncommon at, at one of my former stops, they, they took out a half million dollar loan to upgrade their Public Works facility and pay some, and pay for it. So. So, um, it kinda gives us that jumpstart to get the assets we need without, without paying straight cash for it, so, um, I wanted, and I haven't, I, I haven't given this to you guys yet, but I just wanna let you know that this, this is what this was about, was pulling some of those assets, and because of the, you know, like paving, paving a parking lot is, is, you know, it's not, it's not gonna degrade, and within a year, we're able to, to get at one of those, you know, a longer financing period. It's not a, it's not like a five-year loan, but we can lump things together. And then I also include, I, I did have him give some scenarios, um, if it was to include a Public Works facility in the future, which is on here.
And that was with Mr. Peck?
Yes, that was through Mr. Peck, that, who, Mr. Peck is for Concord, he's the one who redid the sewer loans, and I think we benefited greatly from. So I did ask about doing like a drawdown-type loan where it's as we need it over, you know, so we'd have a period to use it. If we didn't use it, we'd, you know, so.
So, so we're only paying on what we've used, but, um.
Just, just, once again, just as providing options as far as, you know, as, as you guys look at how to pay for some of this stuff. Yeah.
What do interest rates look like these days?
That's what you're looking at, interest rate, five to six-point-two-five, so I think we missed that a little bit. If we'd have been looking at this a year or two ago, I guess, Terry, this would've been a little different, huh?
Yeah, so we're looking at like a line of credit or an actual lump things together immediately and get a loan for that amount?
Should be a drawdown.
Don't wanna pay interest on money we're not using.
Yeah.
We've done that before.
I hope that's how he said it, cause that's what I asked him to do, understand, I explained to him, certainly looking at the, you know, that's.
So I think the bigger, it's good to start talking about the bigger, bigger, huge picture
Yep.
of a building, like maybe January, February, start the conversation, but.
No, I know, I, what I wanted to do is just kinda what, what that would look like, cause obviously, there would still be a cash commitment with the loan, but I just wanna let you know we have that.
We have four hundred and, just Public Works alone, four hundred thirty-eight-ish thousand dollars that it's not right now budgeted, so that would quickly throw it right to a deficit. So I think we've done this before, we get the list of what we currently have, we know there's a need, we've heard it year over year. We don't wanna kick it down, but what, what do we have to do?
Yeah, how, how many of those computers do we need to purchase in twenty twenty-five? You've got a bunch of them. But they're not a lot, I mean, they're like ten thousand dollars for the computers.
I'm just talking Public Works, that's two thousand dollars.
Oh, just Public Works, okay.
Out of four hundred thirty-eight, so that's not much. But more, Jason, for, for you, you have the daily conversations, you see the stuff. I'm asking for, right now, to come back and say, here's, here's an idea, we need to, we need a loan for a five-year, ten-year. I mean, we get twenty years out of a dump truck, that should be a, a long-term loan, right?
Yeah.
But we can't assume it's gonna continue to happen, right, so. It's a big number, and we have the same conversation every year, which is literally kicking it down the road, so we don't wanna do this. I mean, with equipment.
And I think the carport's important, even though it's not for next year, that's important as well. Twenty-six.
What do we need to decide tonight to meet our budget deadlines?
Uh, really, what I would need decided is how much, how much you guys, how much the board wants to send to the cap, the CIP. You know, and obviously, we've got the hiring in there, so that's really deciding on those. So if you, if you say, we, you know, we only wanna send three hundred thousand to the CIP, and then we gotta see where, you know, where that kinda shakes, that, that would be an option. Or if you wanna cover what's, what we think we need, wanna do.
Can we change that at any time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the.
We can start off with a number, and then if we think we, it's gonna, we can change it.
Yeah, the CIP, it's an ever, kind of, that's what, once again, it's.
It's not set, though.
No.
How about two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah.
No, it comes out, it comes out of the general fund and goes into the CIP for those things that aren't in the budget, like the security cameras, like the laptops, like, um, if the roof falls in.
So like, for instance, the way that the CIP is set up is every department kinda has its own bucket, so Public Works, admin, police, um, building. So I know a lot of this stuff is Public Works-related. What I have in the twenty twenty, if this kinda helps the discussion, in the twenty twenty-four forecast, Public Works would be showing a, a cash balance of two hundred sixty-nine thousand five forty-six. So I think, if I'm hearing correctly, most of that, whatever we sent over is for Public Works stuff. If we still wanna put other things in the budget and, you know, look for alternative, I think that's where you're talking about, like revisiting in the new year. Cause obviously, we can't make that, you know, I wouldn't be looking, you know, that's not a decision made tonight, but, um, now, cause the way, the way the CIP works is that only fifty percent of that each year gets used, so that it's accumulating. But, you know, we could, you guys would have the option of utilizing that, what, what cash is in there and cause all, you know, realistically, the fifty percent, that's just, that's just a way to try to build up the, 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 the CIP fund over years, which it, which right now, it does, but obviously, the general fund is the one that's, that really kinda takes it on the proverbial chin, so to speak, because that's where, that's where it's coming from.
So hypothetically, if you, if we picked two hundred and fifty thousand, how would you divide that up?
So.
Meaning percentages to the different departments.
So the way, the way that I have it right now is so any of the set aside, what we call set aside of money, is three percent goes to admin, twenty-two percent goes towards buildings, which, uh, five percent goes towards police, and seventy percent goes towards Public Works.
Is, is this based on just the need?
So, yeah, so.
Those percentages fluctuate.
They, they can fluctuate, so the, what we did, what, for this year's budget, the board, the board, um, as far as that, was two hundred dollar, at least two hundred thousand dollars, what we call set aside money, so that's where that percentage comes from. Cause obviously, the Public Works has, has the biggest need for assets. But yeah, we, once again, we could, we could change those percentages as we need to. The sewer fund is, is the same way, is I, I try to make the percentages based on, um, you know, the needs of, 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 of the capital purchases and projects, so that they can fund, so that they're able to fund, and ultimately, much like, you're trying to make it self-sustaining, so that, and, you know, we get to a point where, like, if you look in the future of the budget, where you see, like, if, if the set aside is two hundred thousand, and you see two hundred thousand coming from the general fund, the CIP, that means the CIP was able to pay for all of its projects. That would be our ultimate goal, we, you know, we obviously can't do that overnight, cause our needs are far outweighing our cash, our cash flow for it.
Is your suggestion two hundred thousand dollars?
That's, that's the annual set aside at the very, so, so the, what we would've discussed last year is at the, at the minimum that the board loo, at least consider at least sending two hundred thousand.
I mean, if I'm reading this sheet right, it looks like for twenty twenty-four, we budgeted what's listed as transfer to capital reserve of two hundred ninety-five thousand.
Yeah, so that means there was a two hundred thousand set, and then there was projects that got built into there.
And then it says our projection is actually three hundred and eleven.
Uh, that was because we ended up getting that second police car, both the police cars hit us this year. We were, we were supposed to get the one last year.
And it looks like your draft budget, you had four hundred and six.
So four, yeah, so four oh six, so essentially, what happens with the way the, with the way it's currently set up, utilizing fifty percent of that balance, the general fund covers whatever difference, whatever difference that year to try to, to cover those purchases, so that's where you'll see it.
I think it makes sense for planning purposes to have the two hundred thousand transfer, but I also think it makes sense for us to consider the long-term lending for some of these big-ticket items that have long lifespans, because there's no place in the budget for those. And I assume we could have that discussion early in the new year.
Well, much like Terry's, you know, if, if, if the board wants to consider financing, and I, like I said, I wanted to get something, so you guys could kinda look at that as, you know, we've got options, one thing I can say, we have options based on our needs that we would be able to finance, and we could spread that out ten to fifteen years because of, because of what we'd be looking to finance. And I think that's the other thing with the liquid fuels, I think we're, I think you're a hamstric, I think you can, you might not be able to go out more than five to seven, I, I think, too. I think there might be some restrictions on that as far as financing.
I have another question, and maybe this is for another meeting, cause it is getting late, but if we are using our road crew and our equipment to do work in our parks, I believe we can use open space money for that. For that portion that is maintenance of open space.
Uh, so you are correct, um, that is something that we did at Springfield, because they had their park, they had mowing, um, that they did, so they, we, we calculated the, kinda the man-hours and used the FEMA rates for the equipment and came up with a number, and that, and, and they were taking, the, the open space fund, their open space fund was covering some of the maintenance of, of those parks.
I mean, it's just something to think about for the future.
I, I haven't brought it up, only cause our open space fund is, it, you know, it's not, you know, it's not flush with cash really either, so. But that, that would be an option, much like we do with the sewer fund, so like, you know, the sewer fund covers half of Tommy's, uh, salary and then fifteen percent of Bonnie's. So that's, that labor in the sewer fund, that's, that's, that's where that's coming from, so it'd be much the same way, where we would just have to, we'd have to come up with a good number on the man-hours and equipment, and the board would have to bless that, but I mean, we're not gonna, I, you might be looking at five to ten thousand.
Yeah, I know, it's not gonna solve the budget problems, but it's something.
Mm-hmm. But that's, if you, if that, if that's something you guys would like, I mean, I, like I said, I, you know, I've talked to Tommy about trying to determine, you know, trying to nail that down for you guys to be able to make, you know, more informed decisions on, you know, park stuff, so that you're more aware, cause I think as you, you know, even going through where we have to plow and stuff, it's been very eye-opening for me as, you know, or the little parks that we have that I had no idea are ours. You know, it's all, you know, kind of all over Springmount.
So what do we still need to accomplish today, and what do we need to accomplish at our meeting in two weeks?
So I would be looking for direction on where, you know, if, if it's a straight allocation for the, the sewer, or for the capital funding. Basically, you can bless the projects, we might have to get creative on how we may pay for those, in the sense of that's where we, if we end up with a deficit, um, budget, which we know any allocation towards CIP is gonna give us that. And then if you want us to do, um, so I would, over these next two weeks, you guys would get the updated financials, and if the board's okay with it at the, or November sixth general meeting, you'd be authorizing advertisement for that twenty-day period with adoption at, I believe it's.
Let's go to our schedule here.
I think the December general meeting.
It's beginning of December.
I think that, I think that was the way for us not to have a special meeting, because I believe if we wait till even the November work session, it's gonna be tough getting.
We're talking Christmas week, yeah.
Well, and we bump up our, we bump up our, our, a December work session a week to get out of Christmas, so it kinda, we can get stuff in the mercury fast, it's just I can't, and I, and I wouldn't wanna be presumptuous that the board's gonna adopt the budget without you guys adopting it. So I wouldn't wanna put it in before you guys actually.
Alright, so what you're looking for us from today is, is the board okay with putting two hundred thousand dollars into the CIP? In the general fund?
Yeah, yes, with the assumption that, that nothing's, no projects are approved yet, it's just putting the money in the CIP, okay.
Okay, so we've got that. Is there anything else?
Uh, we didn't talk about hiring anybody.
Yeah, we have that, we have the hiring, so the way the, the way the, the draft one was set up is, we'd be looking, we were looking to hire a experienced police off, that it was rated with an experienced police officer. Oh, you wanna talk about it, chief?
When, when Jason and I were discussing it, we based it on, uh, like a tenured police officer with the, the way the contract is set up. We did it on the high-end, somebody that would come in at a top-rate salary to give, so there would be some play. Not to say that that person, if, if we hired, would come in at that rate, but we use that based on the number, for the budgeting purposes, for it, to give some leeway, cause most of an experienced police officer, as everyone is experiencing, hiring crises, especially in law enforcement. But budget-wise, we use it as a top-rate officer.
And that would've also been receiving our benefits at merit, you know, at the, so basically.
Right, so, so what's the cost all up, cause that's another car, that's another computer, that's, right? Two hundred and fifty thousand?
So, Corporal Milligan has expressed his interest that he's gonna fully retire early next, sometime in the first quarter, so we're, so with that said, we would not have to need a, a computer right off the bat. We would have his work, his workspace in the squad room. Vehicle-wise, we could probably make do with what we had. I mean, the priority from my standpoint would be another body to replace what we're losing in Corporal Milligan.
Corporal Milligan only works half a week.
Correct, but with that said, he does a lot of our investigations, so he, he's.
So you're, you're anticipating a replacement?
I would, that, that is what I'm hoping, to replace Corporal Milligan's spot where we're not proverbial behind the ball, somebody that has experience, that can basically, the plug and play, that understands how to do police work. And then one of the officers that are already on staff could take over some of his responsibilities on the investigation side, and that new officer would then backfill on the patrol, on, on the street, handling calls for service.
So that would take us from five and a half officers to six.
Correct.
You're not gonna really feel the financial impact of that until close to twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
How long it takes to hire net people, right?
Well, we, yeah, we got lucky with our last.
Yeah.
We know we got lucky, um, so, as you may recall, this is the removed adjusted, taking that out of the, just straight labor, not equipment, that was a hundred and twenty-three thousand six eighty-eight, based on a hiring date of April first.
No, 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 well, but then all, all the benefits and the pension.
No, that's, that includes the benefit, that.
That's half a year.
That, that includes benefits.
So, so what?
It's the labor part.
So what would it be for a full year? Which will be the next year? Two hundred and fifty thousand? I, I guess my question is, I mean, you hear us talking about the budget, I mean, we all have two nickels to scrape together, so is there any way we can get someone like Milligan? Because he, we didn't pay his medical, you know, he.
It, it depends on who, who the applicant pool would be.
I mean, going from part-time with no benefits to going full-time with benefits, that's a big, big jump.
The benefits part, I, it would be, it's a fifty percent chance that they would take it, or if it's somebody that's married, has a family, and their spouse has the benefits.
There's still the pension, which is, I mean, I, I don't wanna dangle dime, I'm just saying that, that relatively speaking, Corporal Milligan was a great bang for the buck, cause he got all his experience, and he, he didn't take any benefits. So is there? So is there anybody out there like him, like an experienced state police officer who would?
I mean, there, I'm sure there are, but until like a hiring notice is made public, you're not going to really know. I mean, I know I've speak to people that are, express interest, but expressing that interest and actually taking, beginning the process of filling out the application, going into a background, you know, because then they have to notify if they're currently employed, notify that employer that they're looking to leave. So until a hiring notice is made public, it's a lot of hearsay. Until with that notice being made public, then act, then there's some action that would be taken for people that would be interested.
I mean, you know what I'm saying is that if we were able to get someone like Dave Milligan, there would be almost zero impact on our budget.
So you're referencing like a part-time officer?
Yeah.
So I, I understand the, the, the part-time aspect of it. I mean, it's a possibility. The question that I, or not the question, but the concern that I would have is if it's somebody that's part-time, we're investing in uniforms, equipment, and then they realize, hey, this is not what I want to do, or I don't want to do, I don't want to do police work, then we, it's, we're taking a loss too. At the time, the energy that.
I mean, I, I understand all that, but, you know, sitting right next to you is someone who also wants a full-time employee. So it, it's, there's no money in the budget really for either of them.
I, I understand that.
So how do we, how do we figure out which direction to go in? I guess what I'm saying is if, if you were able to replace Corporal Milligan, that would have almost no impact on the budget. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that's the directional going, but that ideally would be a way to.
I can put feelers out, see if there's somebody that's interested.
I mean, I'm only speaking for myself, so I should just be quiet and let the rest of the board speak.
And Dave's definitely retiring.
He has expressed that he is going to go. I don't have, I don't have a exact date yet, but I know, I think he's at like thirty-five years of law enforcement, so he's paid his dues tenfold.
And remind me, what level of experience are you looking for?
I would love somebody that has four to five years, you know, if, if it was a full-time spot, four or five years that understands how to do police work where we can, hey, this is how we do it. This is our policies. This is our procedures. Here's the township, learn the township. So I can hand him the keys and say, start, start answering calls, start doing traffic.
Maybe we don't know who the applicants will be, but it sounds like we have a need.
Correct.
Love to know who the perfect applicant is, but we don't know who, who they are, so.
Unfortunately, they're fewer and fewer between.
We, we have been very lucky with our hires. And I think that being, I participated in the last two interviews, and generally speaking, someone has, generally has something that's, you know, some issue, you, you don't, we've been lucky with our candidates that they really, and they, they love being here. So a lot of the departments are struggling just for bodies, and that's, that's part of the conversations we've had where you, until you put the ad out, you really, honestly, it's hiring of anybody anymore. You really don't know until you stick it out. It's, I think it's so, it's, it's really time, timing because our latest hire, we thought we were going to, we thought we were, we were going to lose her to a bigger department.
Yeah. If you can get us just, board the, kind of the general numbers that, of what Milligan was for 2024, and we'd see what our difference would be.
So, yeah, I mean, just taking your number and looking at it, right, so that's three quarters of a year. So we're look, expanding that to a full year, it's a hundred and sixty-five thousand. And I assume that, that's full up, benefits, uniforms, everything. At least those are the numbers. I remember when we talked years ago, when I talked to Mark about the cost of hiring a new officer with less experience was, wasn't a whole lot less than that. So then obviously there's a delta because we will, somebody will be retiring, and I guess it's what Terry wants to know, right? Yeah.
I understand. We just want to know what the.
So short of, short of the tax, you know, you were looking at about fifty thousand-ish, plus the, plus what we'd pay to payroll taxes.
So you'd take one, one sixty-five minus fifty would be the increase, the net increase projected.
So I guess then my question is, what do we need more, a new police officer, a new road crew officer, or both, or neither? Because I'm looking at a budget that doesn't have money for either in it. I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm not saying we don't need, I'm just saying where's the money going to come from, which is how I started this conversation. So Tommy, tell us about your need. Tell us, tell us about your need for a new person.
We need somebody to fill the spot of a labor. I'm not allowed to rake anymore, so that takes me out of doing any manual labor. So we need somebody who would be, fill that entry-level position as a laborer, but we would also require that they have a CDO.
And either of you can tell us what that cost would be per year, all up?
He has it here. Hundred fourteen thousand, all up.
Yeah, that's taken full, yeah, yeah, that's, yep. Yeah, the general rule is with roadwork is you need four, four guys, two guys flagging, or two bodies flagging, one on the equipment, one on the hole. The challenge that even at being at four right now has is half, whether it's Tommy or RJ or someone has to be basically at the plant for a half a day. So that's been the struggle with some of the road projects because they're, you know, so it, it is kind of that domino effect.
I, I don't think anybody on this board disagrees that we need these two new people. We just have to figure out where the money's going to come from. Because we can't manufacture it. So these two new personnel would be two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So let's say three hundred thousand dollars a year plus a two hundred thousand to CIP. That's a half a million. I'm just going to say the quiet part out loud. We've come to the point in this township where we have to figure out where that money's going to come from. And again, there's only two ways, what things you can do. You can fire people or you can raise taxes. That's it. It's the only way you can manage your budget.
Regarding the hiring of the police officer for a full-time, we'd take that off the board. What I'll do is I'll do some legwork, put feelers out, see if I can find somebody that's available, like a Dave Milligan, same qualifications, just looking for something that's like retired work. I can, I can sit down and figure out a way to make it work downstairs. I mean, the overall needs of the township is more important than just one department or one section of the township. So I can, I can start doing some legwork on that. And as we get further through, I can, I'll stay in contact with Jason. What we have now, staff-wise, we can make it work. It's just going to be not as visible as we currently are on the street. As long as the board would be okay with that, I, I can make it work operationally until we figure out, you know, until you guys have other decisions to make regarding the overall budget. If that takes a little bit of the maneuvering of, of the budget process.
I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Yeah, I did greatly appreciate it.
And, and you probably know the history of the police department here. We start off with one officer.
Very familiar.
And then we went to two. And we're going to get there.
I just, I, I mean, I, I know, and I can speak for everyone downstairs. We've made strides. I don't want to, and I think the residents have come to expect that certain levels. So I'm, as with you guys in your position, managing everything to provide the best service possible. We can make it happen. I can make it happen. I can make that commitment. And I, I can do the legwork on the, behind the scenes, see if we can figure out and find that hat, that sweet spot between somebody at Milligan. And I can make it happen. I will make it happen.
Yeah, but as I said earlier, I think we've come to the point in this township where we're growing and we have new residents who have demands for a lot of services, and we're really struggling to deliver them. Yeah, we're struggling. And like I said, you can either fire people or raise taxes, but this budget is not going to balance itself. You know, whether we get a new police officer or not, it's not going to balance itself. And things break and things happen and, you know, money's getting short. So that applies to every department.
So you still need direction on the public works?
Yes. So a couple of things would be whether or not for the public works individual, whether or not the board's okay with the fire company's request as far as millage. I do have a slide if you guys want to go through what, I, I broke down the average with going up point two as far as a millage increase. If you guys want to go through that, it is in the presentation or you want to chew on that between meetings. I mean, I don't.
Do you mean the fire millage or our, our overall millage?
He's talking about raising taxes, I think.
Yeah. So this includes the fire millage, this screen here. Page twenty-three. So right now, well, let me hit this one first. Oh, my dollar doesn't even show up. That's a shame. So right now, based on our current assessment, the average property owner has an assessment of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven fifty-six, seventy-six, and their average real estate tax bill would be six thousand, thirty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. This breaks it down, so the average tax bill for local tax is four hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixteen cents. This is what it would look like with incremental increases to, of point two as far as the increase to, from the four thirty-two, sixteen average, and then once again incorporating the fire company's increase. So at point two general, with the fire, you're looking at four seventy-six, ninety-six for up from the four thirty-two, sixteen, and then kind of so on as you go down.
What impact would this have on our budget for each of these scenarios?
You know, honestly, that is a good question because I.
That's really what we need to know. Are we talking ten thousand, a hundred thousand, a half a million?
I mean, if it helps, if it helps move the ball, I'm.
Yeah, point two is, is roughly a hundred and eight thousand.
Point, a point two increase.
With a point two increase, yep.
I was just going to say that if it helps move the ball, I'm perfectly happy with the request made by the fire company to increase the tax.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree too.
Same.
And then if there's a, for scenario three, what would that give us? That's a point four increase. Because honestly, the last time we increased taxes, it was a hundred thousand. I don't think we even noticed it.
So that takes it from seven thirty-two to eight ninety-four, so a hundred and sixty-two thousand.
Shouldn't, shouldn't the point four be double the point two? I mean, shouldn't it just be double? I mean, the, the point four increase is fifty dollars a year, which is like four dollars a month. Well, how about if you email this to us?
Yeah, I can. I mean.
Okay, the, the different scenarios so we understand what the overall impact would be.
So I had that on this slide last year, and I think this slide was really confusing. So of course, it doesn't show what our impact is.
Okay. So do you have what you need from us tonight?
We didn't talk about the public works. We didn't come to a consensus on that.
So after the next meeting is when we need to then create an advertise?
So, so we need to cut, we would, based on the schedule, we would need to come out of the general meeting with you guys authorizing advertisement of the budget. Now we can make changes, so you don't have to roll into that meeting.
Yeah. So we have two weeks between now and our next meeting. We knew last year, dealing with this, is going to be a couple of hard years because we have not invested in public works for many, many years. We're realizing that now, and we'll realize it again next year. But even looking at, out four or five years, it even gets worse.
Yes.
I guess as the manager, you should know all the different moving pieces of this one. I'd like for you to kind of take some time, look at that. Equipment, facilities, labor, or employees. Because I just, I mean, every year if we keep spending four hundred thousand dollars or whatever the number ends up being, and then several millions of dollars, we're not going to be able to keep up with that. So if there's a recommendation for the year in front of us, but also continue to not fall behind, I don't know if, I don't know if that's possible to kind of do that analysis and send it to us, or what, if we're allowed to do information sharing meeting between now and the next meeting. I, I don't know if it makes sense for us to have a meeting where it's just information sharing.
I think that that would be really a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as we don't talk about making any decisions.
At least then we have, again, here's option A and option B for public works, spending in the next one to five years.
So, I mean, some, I mean, obviously not that detail, but like the self-liquidating debt report tells us what our expenses look like over the next so many years. I mean, something kind of like, I think that's kind of what you're suggesting is what do the next five to ten years look like and how do we, how are we going to deal with it?
It feels like we just bought a dump truck. I know it's been a few years, and then we're going to buy a dump truck, and next year we have a dump truck. So it's like, for us trying to understand, like we did with the police vehicles, where I feel like we now have a little bit of room to breathe, but we see them coming again, where coming into this position several years ago, it was, here's all our old stuff, right? So we'll get there somewhere, hopefully soon, but until we understand, okay, we have two to three years of, it's going to hurt a little bit, but then these things should last, or we at least have a maintenance or a lease or whatever it ends up being. And maybe reach out to each of us individually when you kind of have, have that idea, or we can have an information sharing only session.
Yeah.
So, so maybe we need to go beyond twenty thirty-two, maybe go.
How far out do you want? I pick twenty thirty-two because generally when you get too far out, it kind of.
Should we go ten years out?
Well, I think maybe take the, the new facility out of it. Like, that's something big, but take that out of it for now. So it's the, here's what we have currently, and here's the things that our flag does could fall apart tomorrow.
Okay.
And that's why we're talking about them for next year.
Yep.
Here's the things that are going to fall apart in three years. Know it's coming. Know it's coming.
I mean, honestly, it's set up that way now, but that's, that's the tweaking part, kind of like we pushed the carport out, understanding that that's not in the, that wasn't in the cards for that, so.
It seems like Public Works, unless I'm wrong, is the only one that has the big ticket items right now.
Yes. Yeah, the two police vehicles caught and all.
We'll all talk about them. Public Works. Okay.
And again, just speaking from myself, I mean, the work you guys have just continues to increase. So whether we get a new road crew officer in the first quarter or the second quarter or the third quarter, I think that's something that's pretty immediate, especially when these new developments come on board.
Just so there's no surprises, just doing a quick math here. So if I use our projected real estate taxes for this year of 872 and then look at what a millage rate of 3.12 as opposed to 2.72, which is basically a point four increase, you're talking additional revenue of about $128,000. That's right, because we're just talking about real estate taxes, millage rate. That's just, you know, taking ratios and multiplying it by our projection for this year.
Well, that would pay for a new road crew officer and nothing else.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's what we're doing, right?
Well, and also I can look at the percentage that we're doing to set aside, make that not as aggressive, trying to, trying to get the CIA, you know, because that's part of the catch up part as far as the cash flow. So where it's at 50%, that's, all right, I'm, when you guys, when you guys want this by?
I was just going to ask what timeframe you're looking at for an information, how fast you can get that info together?
Uh, yeah, I have, I have some catch up obviously from putting this stuff together, but I should be able to have updated doc. I mean, there's not a lot of tweaking that, you know, I should be able to have the document by this, by this, for this weekend and then we can follow up. I mean, we've got, I've got two meetings next week, Monday and Wednesday with the zoning hearing board and our special, you know, volunteer meeting with Peter that I'll be attending.
It's on the 30th, yeah.
So, and I got to be honest, my, my nighttime, I'm, I don't have the availability I had because I've got coaching commitments, so we'll squeak something if.
Is anybody available in the morning at some point, someday? Hour, hour and a half?
How about the end of the day, like at five?
I would prefer more, that's where I'm.
I mean, I can, I can make sure I'm, I'm available between 10 and 1.
Yeah, if we can do that, that's just like I said, I, it's, I'm nonstop right now, so.
Do you zoom?
I would have to zoom in.
Yeah.
Which zoom is fine. I mean, that's, that's fine. I mean, essentially, I'm just presenting what.
So, so why don't you propose a day and time?
Okay.
And then we'll all.
Give us a couple so that we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, just two, two.
All right. And, and morning is okay for now. Morning ish.
I think so. Yeah. Send us some texts.
All right.
Okay.
So do you still need direction on public works?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, honestly, it's whether you just want to propose adding a body, much like we did adding someone in June or push it out in the later in the year.
I mean, if we do it in June, that's a half a year. That at least gives us a little bit of a breather, but I, look, you guys work like dogs and there's so much going on.
Don't we have a period or an opportunity to reopen the budget up until like what?
With the, that's.
I think it's only in an election year.
With incoming supervisors, there's that, that's period, but if, if we needed to add a significant cost, we could open the budget. There's not a, there's not a time limit on that. The, the timeframe is what you're, I think when you get a new supervisor, when a new elected official comes in, you have till February 10th, I think, of the next year to reopen the budget. What I, what you're talking about, we would just have to adopt essentially an amendment to the current, the current budget.
Okay.
If, if it was, if it was a significant enough amount and we, you know, we couldn't cover it somewhere else, you know?
Yeah, I thought there was like a percentage in any one category.
Yeah, it's based, it's based on the categories. Yeah, it's based on the categories. I've, I've done it like, I think twice since I've been at this, so, but.
So do we need to talk about the road crew person or have we decided we're not going to talk about it?
I'm fine with adding a road crew person.
Well, add it, see where, see where we lie.
Maybe do it for half a year.
Well, that's what he has in there now.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I've got enough to go on.
So the budget discussion is done.
For now.
Last chance, guys. All right, all right. Bring us to public comment. Who's still here? Public comment? And can you take the presentation off, see if anyone in Zoom is still with us? Okay, Linda, you've got your hand raised. Is that, you still have a question?
For like two hours.
Go, go ahead.
I know, I actually have a comment and probably could have saved about an hour to an hour and a half of this discussion had you called on me earlier, Marla. And what, okay, I appreciate the public services that are offered for this township. The police do an excellent job. Thank you, Chief Cass, for living within your means. The public works, so they do what they do and, but what you folks seem to be forgetting, we are a second class township. We, your governing powers are dictated by second class township code. And what you seem to be forgetting, you spoke of as of September 30th of this year, we have $1,345,000 in CDs, which were referred to as reserves. You raised taxes 17% last year on young couples just starting out and senior citizens on a fixed income, but that tax increase allowed as of December 31st of 2023, we had $900,000 in our CDs. They have since been deposited 455,000 this year into the CDs, which you call reserves. And also 200,000 in either June or July that was transferred into the CIP fund, the Capital Improvement Fund. So that's $700,000 you've just squirreled away. Now, under second class township code, you are as a second class township under Article 25, the corporate powers, you can have reserve funds. Under section 1508, there's the capital reserve fund, which allows you to squirrel money away. I'll read it to you. Capital Reserve Fund. A, this Board of Supervisors may create and maintain a separate capital reserve fund for any anticipated capital expense, which funds shall be designated for specific purposes or the purposes when created. The money shall be in this fund shall be used for no other purposes unless the Board of Supervisors declares that conditions in the township make other expenses more urgent than those which the fund was created. That's fine. Then there's also section 158.1, a capital reserve operating fund. The Board of Supervisors shall have the power to create, maintain a separate operating reserve fund in order to minimize future revenue shortfalls and deficits, provide greater continuity and predictability in the funding of vital government services and minimize the need to increase taxes to balance the budget in times of fiscal distress, provided the capacity to undertake long range financial planning and develop financial resources to meet long-term needs. But in that fund, paragraph B, the Board of Supervisors may annually make appropriations from the general township fund to the operating reserve fund, but no appropriation shall be made to the operating reserve fund if the effect of the appropriation would cause the fund to exceed 25% of the estimated revenue of the township's general fund in the current fiscal year. That being said, last year's estimated general revenue fund was 2.4 million, which would allow you to have $600,000 in that fund, give or take, which is a nice buffer if something, an emergency happens. The other $700,000 that you're sitting on needs to be allocated to all these things that you say you need to pay for. And I really don't appreciate the fear mongering tactics by Supervisor Hexter of we have to fire somebody or, you know, we're going to be broke. We are not broke. This 1.345 million dollars in CDs is not incorporated into any of these finances that you're speaking of now. So yes, I'm not saying there may not be a need to raise taxes in the future or whatever, but stop with the fear mongering tactics. There's no reason to raise taxes, real estate taxes for the general fund at this time. Perhaps maybe for the fire company, they do a good job. We want them to have up to date equipment. We want our EMS services to be and our public works and our police to be funded, but we have the money.
Thank you, Linda.
So stop, stop with the fear mongering tactics, Marla, and abide by second class township code. That's all I ask of this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other pub, go ahead, Dan.
I'll make this quick, just from the standpoint, and you may have explained this, Jason, I didn't pick up on it. Do the projections you had going out for the next couple of years include revenues increases based upon your projection of the houses that come online?
Yes.
They do. Okay, I, I just didn't pick up on that.
That's why you get the real, you get the bump in real estate in the next couple of years and then it, it kind of stagnates again.
So that helps us out a little bit, but not enough. Okay, got it. Thank you. Oh, Dan Orf Kratzer.
No, these are only, these are only subdivisions that are actively being built.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, oh, sorry, supervisor comment?
Just bringing this up to put it on the agenda, I think it's, we're in a position, we could make a recommendation on the open space vacancy committee at our next meeting. We could add that to our agenda. Upper Pots Grove, very nice that the judge can read the law just like the rest of us. Voting, please vote. Please also behave yourselves. And remember, when you say we the people, that means all the people, not just the ones you agree with.
Any other supervisor comment? Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.